Good evening, everybody. I think we have everybody in attendance. We're going to do a little informal roll call here. Or actually, we might as well just get it started. I think we've got a quorum. I see. Got one, two, Jennifer, Susie, Annette. Is Randy here?
Randy is absent. Did you have Bob next to you? So that would be four.
Okay. Where's our fourth? Bandy, Mr. Bandy?
I don't see.
If I could speak for a moment, I got a text from Jim about 20 minutes ago. He's having connectivity issues and does not think he's going to be able to get in. I had similar issues last meeting. It took me about 10 minutes, so I signed in extra super early this time. But he did ask me to let Amy know he was having difficulty and most likely would not be able to attend.
Thank you so much, Annette. I really appreciate that. I think we do have a quorum, so we'll go ahead and get started. We will start with our roll call and proceed from there.
All right. Commissioner Robbins is excused. Commissioner Bandy is excused for the moment. We'll let him get in who he can. Commissioner Nordstrom, are you here?
Yes, present.
Commissioner Durrell?
I'm here.
Commissioner Fernandez-Madrid?
Here.
And Commissioner Graham?
Here.
And Chair Stewart?
Present.
All right, we have five.
Evening. First item on our agenda is approval of last month's minutes. You can find them at page three in our packet. Approximately two pages. Are there any comments, concerns, or revisions that are requested by either parties? I see, Annette, you've got your hand up.
I noticed that in the minutes, under number four, the action discussion, discussion items in the motion, and it actually in the paragraph prior to that, there was no mention of the fire sprinkler issue, which the developer did give us a verbal agreement that they would sprinkle the building, and that certainly influenced my vote. So I'd like to ask that that be included in the minutes from August 16th, action item number four, that that was discussed per se and also agreed to by the developer.
Thank you very much, Annette. Any other commissioners have any objection to that addition to the minutes? Hearing none, just wait for a motion to approve with Annette's recommended addition.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Excellent. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved unanimously. Thank you very much. Next this evening is citizen comments. We invite those appearing virtually. If you'd like to raise your hand if you have a citizen's comment for an item that is not on the agenda for this evening. If it's on the agenda for this evening, there will be an opportunity for further comment. The only agenda item we do have is a zone change, Z or Zebra Charlie 2021-01. But if there are any other public comments, we have nobody here at City Hall. Is anybody in Zoom land interested in making a comment? Commissioner Fernandez Madrid?
I'd like to, pertinent to that last motion, I'd like to again thank the developer. It was two days after our meeting that I'll bring to your attention, the front page or the Oregonian, where there was a horrendous apartment fire with multiple deaths, where people leapt to their deaths and were burnt in an unsprinkled new building in southeast Portland. So I just wanted to get that on the, on the. Thank you to the developer because we certainly don't want that happening in Carlton. And also thank you to the city manager for responding to the letter that we wrote, asking for the review of the comprehensive plan as well as putting out an RFP to have a firm outside of our city council actually do that work. And I'm sure it will happen in a much more timely manner. So thank you to the city manager for responding to that. It's a real concern. And I think those of us on planning take this very seriously. So thank you again.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Fernandez Madrid. Seeing no other public comments, nobody in Zoom land raising their hand, and nobody present, we'll proceed to our first topic for the evening. This will be a quasi judicial hearing for the purposes of reviewing zone change, ZC Zebra Charlie 2021-01, applicant Chatty Davis Construction, the tax lot number R as in Roger 3422 CC 01200. I'll open the public hearing, and I'd like to first call for any counselors to declare their conflict of interest. Actually, excuse me, before I do that, I'll just go ahead and read our hearing's disclosure statement in full. All persons testifying shall be deemed parties to the application and must provide their name and full mailing address if they wish to be notified of a decision, continuances, appeals, or other procedural actions required by the code. The city zoning code specifies applicable criteria to be relied upon in making a decision. Those criteria and findings of fact are in the city staff report. Public testimony should be limited to those criteria and findings of fact or to other city or state land use standards that the person testifying believes apply to the proposed land use action. Failure to raise an issue in person or in writing with sufficient detail to afford the hearing body and parties to the hearing an opportunity to respond to that issue precludes appeal to the city council or land use board or to seek damages in circuit court due to a condition of approval. Before the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may ask the council for an opportunity to present additional relevant evidence or testimony that is within the scope of the hearing. The hearing's body shall grant the request by scheduling a date to finish the hearing, a continuance, to a time and date certain, or by leaving the record open for additional evidence or testimony. We'll start with required statements, staff report, applicant's presentation, those in favor of the application, those opposed, neutral testimony, rebuttal by applicant, request for continuance to leave the record open, close of hearing, close of record, deliberations, and then our decision. With that said, I would like to request in a roll call, any counselors to declare any conflict of interest, abstentions, bias, or ex parte contact. Amy, would you help me go alphabetically?
All right. Do you don't see Commissioner Bandy at this time? So we have Commissioner Fernandez Madrid. Do you have any extensions, bias, ex parte contact to claim?
No.
Commissioner Graham, do you have any to claim?
No, but I do know where it was located.
Commissioner Nordstrom?
No.
Commissioner Durrell?
No.
Commissioner Stewart?
None to report. Next, I'm going to request that anybody in the audience, again, there's nobody here in person other than myself and city staff and Bob. Does anybody have any challenges to the jurisdiction for the planning commission to have this quasi judicial hearing this evening? Hearing none, we'll proceed. We'll start with the staff report. Mr. Jenkins, are you ready to proceed?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chair, and good evening to planning commission and members of the public. Today we'll be discussing the application zone change 2021-01, file number ZC 2021-01. As mentioned, the applicant is Chatty Davis Construction, and they are represented by AKS Engineering. The request is a zone change of a 16 acre property as identified by the chair, tax man member 3422 CC tax lot 1200 from the city's agricultural holding zone to residential median density, which is an art, which is the city's R2 zone. The criteria for a zone change we found in the CDC is, well, is the CDC 17.180.050. Exhibits to your staff report are the vicinity map, city engineers' comments, applicants' response to the application criteria, and the preliminary subdivision plans, which are really just for reference for the purposes of this application. Again, I want to emphasize that this is just a zone change application. There are no concurrent developments or development applications such as a subdivision or a site design review associated with the application at this time. This is purely a zone change. Procedure, a zone change is processed as a type three procedure with an initial, it's an initial public hearing by the planning commission, who then makes a recommendation for approval or denial to city council based on substantial findings in response to the zone change approval criteria located in CDC 17.180. The council may decide to approve or deny the zone change, and ultimate approval is adopted by ordinance. Any appeal to council's final decision will be to the Land Use Board of Appeals of Oluba. The application was received, docketed on June 23rd, 2021, and deemed technically complete on the 30th. The city has until 120 days or until the 28th of October to issue a decision on the application. 35 day notice required to the Department of Land Conservation Development was sent on July 2nd, 2021. And notice was posted and mailed on August 3rd, 2021, and published in the News Register on both the 27th and 31st editions of August. So the site, the property is currently vacant. It's located directly south of the Apple Carlton Elementary School and to the west of the approved JR Meadows 2 subdivision. Wilson Streets, Wilson Cleveland Streets currently stubbed into the, into the subdivision to the, or into the proposed area subject to the potential zone change from the east. And there are two properties zoned R3 and MX, which is the city's mixed density residential to the west, and other properties zoned agricultural holding to the south. As mentioned, zone changes are governed by the criteria found in CDC section 17.180, specifically section 030 and 050. So I'm going to go through those in depth here. Criterion A of section 17.80.130 is that there is a lack of comparatively, or other comparatively zoned land to satisfy the proposed use. In this case, the city's R2 zoning designation is relatively new. So the first actual implementation of this zone was, was for the rezoning of JR Meadows 2 to the east, which added approximately 90 lots of that R2 zoning. That is the only R2 in Carlton. The remainder of all residential land is predominantly R1, which is the, the lower density residential, predominantly single family. And so there's, there's not as much as the middle density, smaller lot, single family, as well as attached, single family and duplex uses allowed in the R2, excuse me, in the R2 zone. So staff finds that this, this criterion is met. A criterion B states that the change of zone is in conformance with the comprehensive plan, the CDC, and other applicable street and highway plans. So again, applicable plans in this case are the city's comprehensive plan, development code, and the city's transportation systems plan. It's important to note, in this case, the city has a little bit of a weird quirk to the development code where there is no method for a third party initiated comprehensive plan man, map amendment. The city attorney and staff have, have discussed this and determined that in order, this will need to be amended at a future time if the zone change is approved. But the comprehensive plan map will ultimately need to match the rezone again if it is approved during the next update to the comprehensive plan map. Specific to the CDC and the development standards therein, these development standards would be reviewed specifically at a time of a future subdivision or site design review. And all, any, all in any future subdivision in the streets and the public right of ways within will have to conform to the standards of CDC 17.64 and all other applicable provisions of the development code. The transportation systems plan shows that the extension of Wilson Cleveland Streets through the subject property to the, excuse me, to the east and Third Street coming from the north in compliance with the future streets plan, plan in the, in the TSP. Criterion C states that the proposed property is adequate in size and shape to facilitate those uses allowed in the proposed zone. So this criterion is really looking at, does the, does the proposed, is the, is the subject property of adequate size, of appropriate size and dimensions to support future development, future street development, the extension of infrastructure, new infrastructure through this property. And it is a 16 acre rectangular property that has current existing streets stubbed on either side. Again, this, approximately the, the preliminary subdivision plan or the temporary, the, the rough subdivision plan that the applicant submitted with the application shows 81 lots, which is approximately five single family units per acre, which is below the density of 10 units per acre. Staff has indicated the developer and then, and the developer has, has indicated their willingness to staff to, to look at constructing duplexes or attached single family housing in addition to single family dwellings at the time of a future subdivision application. If, if the zone change is approved, staff has confirmed that the subject property is capable of supporting the varying types of development that's permitted within the R2 zone while meeting applicable standards. A criterion D states that the proposed property relate, related to streets and highways is adequate to serve the type of traffic that will be generated by the use in the proposed zone. Again, the preliminary subdivision plan shows the future, the planned extension, which would be reviewed at subdivision level to the north and to the west. Streets from, from the east and, and Third Street from the north, Cleveland is a local street, Wilson is a collector. The exhibit B, reviewed by our city engineer, reviewed the transportation systems or the, excuse me, the, the, the transportation impact analysis that was submitted by the developer. Important to note in this case that a revised traffic study will need to be submitted the time of, of any kind of future development application, once the actual development impacts of the site are reviewed in full and, and we know how many units and what densities there is, a potential subdivision would, would be at. Criterion E is that the proposed change of zone will have no substantial impact on the budding property, the uses thereof. Staff finds that there won't be any substantial negative impact. There will be an impact in that there will be streets connecting that, that will allow connection from, from the existing or the planned JR Meadows to the west and, and the Third Street to the, to the north. It will also allow for future connection to the west, to the undeveloped property, should the owners of those properties wish to develop. Adjacent properties are zoned to mixed, mixed density or, excuse me, medium to high density residential, R2, R3, and MX zones. And then the school is, is the public zone to the north. Staff finds that the school, the school property and the additional residential properties to, that border the subject property are all compatible with, with intended use of, of medium density residential development. It's also important to note that this, say, is within the Carlton urban growth boundary and within the city limits and has been really planned for, for future residential use since the development of the UGB. Other applicable criteria outlined in the, in the code are in 17.180.050 as follows. Criterion A states that the proposed zone is appropriate for the comprehensive plan, land use designation on the property, and is consistent with the description of policies, or the description and policies of the applicable comprehensive plan land use designation. So I discussed earlier how this is just a zone change this time. So for the time being, the, the comprehensive plan designation of the site will remain agricultural holding until the city revisits that and then will re-designate to match any future rezone. And again, this is because the city does not have a type three process for an applicant initiated comprehensive plan amendment. So because of this, staff finds that the city will need to look at updating this in, at the time of the future update and, and designate the property appropriately. The following comprehensive goals and policies are applicable to this application. Agricultural lands, which is goal three. The applicable policies are listed in your staff report. Most, most specifically, it states that the agricultural land conversion to urban uses shall be done only when adequate public facilities and services are available to the area available or proposed for development. Again, this is not an application for development. So staff finds that is, that, that with the development of future utilities and the extension from the areas where there are existing utilities along there, as well as with the upgrades to the concrete pump station in the city sewer system, the city will have the capacity to support. This is also listed in a little more detail in exhibit B, which are the city's, city engineers' comments. Open space and scenic sites, similarly, these are, these are more applicable to future development. So open space requirements governed by the policies in the comprehensive plan are implemented through the city's development code and are reviewed at the time of subdivision. At the time of a future subdivision, the developer will be responsible for providing evidence that all, you know, criteria in the comprehensive plan, or excuse me, in the development code are met with relationship, relations to open space, parks, bike and ped pathways, that kind of thing. Recreation is goal eight. Again, this is similarly, this, this has to do more with, with any future subdivision application, the designation, designation of future open space. So that would be reviewed more in depth at the time of a future development application. Goal nine, economic development, is not really applicable to this application either. The only policy that staff found is, is applicable is policy 13, which states that Carlton shall encourage business development that retains, strengthens, and expands the business spaces in Carlton. Because this isn't an application that would open up the site for potential to develop with a range of housing options and an increased population, increased population generally provides more support to businesses. That would be a generally positive effect and in keeping with policy 13. Goal 10, housing is, is, contains, the majority of the policies are applicable to this development. Again, I want to note that, that comprehensive plan, goal 10 findings satisfy statewide planning goal 10 direct, or objectives as well in that any additional goal 10 findings will need to be included and shall be included for a future comprehensive plan map amendment for this property. Policy number one states that, that, that new developments shall be permitted only when all urban services become available. Again, I referenced this in, in the findings for the goal three. But the city engineers indicated that urban services are available and capable of supporting development of the proposed area. Specifically, with relation to the water master plan indicates that there is sufficient water source and treatment capacity to serve the population. That would be result as of an increase of this development. Again, specifically, the applicant will need to show that existing utilities and services exist at the time of a future subdivision application. We are not approving any kind of development that will put any kind of construction or buildings on the ground in Carlton at this time. This is simply for use. Policies two, three, and four are not applicable to this application. This is specifically to improve existing housing stock, infill development, and manufactured housing. This is, this is a vacant property, so there's no existing housing stock on the site. This is also not an area where infill housing is, is relevant or applicable. And policy four is, is that manufactured housing shall be allowed anywhere, single family dwellings are permitted. Again, this is implemented through the development code, which, which does allow single family or manufactured homes. But the applicant has not indicated the intent to construct any manufactured housing as part of any future subdivision application. Residential policy, this residential land use policy is policy six and goal 10. This states that all residential development within the city of Carlton shall conform to state building, electrical, plumbing, and fire codes. Residential development shall be encouraged in a compact and efficient manner to provide the needed housing units for varying income levels, conserve energy supplies, and facilitate the provision of public facilities in efficient and economic manner. So I find that should the zone change application be approved, the applicant will be required to submit, again, a subdivision application prior to any development of the site. A conceptual subdivision plan is included with the application, as exhibit D. All applicable local and state codes, building code, fire code, the development code must be met at the time of permit submittal. There is a, there's a very efficient layout to the site. As mentioned, Cleveland and Wilson Streets are available to be continued from, or extended from east to west and Third Street from north to south. It's a pretty compact rectangular development pattern that will allow for the continuation of the existing block pattern along with lots that are designed to support the, the varying permitted uses of the R2 zone. Policies B and C state that the city shall encourage a mix of housing types, including duplex development within new subdivisions and residential planned unit developments until the city's housing mix more closely resembles the preferred ratio of 75 to 25, single family to multifamily ratio. And policy C states that varying lot sizes and configuration shall be encouraged in order to provide for a variety of house types, densities, and designs. The city's code in R2 has, as the planning commission and city council has commented on in the past, is a little tricky in that the R2 zone is stated as the medium density residential zone, but it does allow for single family uses. The difference between this and the R1 zone is that single family uses are at smaller lot sizes in that attached single family housing along with duplex, multifamily housing is permitted in the zone as well. So the ultimate mix of housing would be reviewed at subdivision, but as it stands, there are, I think we have to look at the, the 2007 housing needs analysis to really look at kind of how housing has, has patterned out over the course of the last 14 years. The policies or findings in that housing needs analysis, again, found the need for more attached, single family, multifamily, and duplex style dwelling. Population since has increased at a rate beyond what was initially indicated in that how to project it as part of that housing needs analysis. And using that, that initial model, it projected a rate of housing that's now, I believe, about 150 units you know, below what we're already at in 2021. This was for 2027. There's some additional findings in here. I'm not going to read all the way through. It's about a two page list of findings, but again, feel free to ask at the end if you have any questions specific to the findings. Ultimately, while the proposed R2 zone does not mandate the development of multifamily housing, it does allow for a wider variety of lot sizes and housing types, including those duplex and townhome developments that the city has indicated is, is a priority, the planning commission and the city council, as well as the comprehensive plan. So per the above policy, staff will encourage the developer to pursue duplex and townhome options at the time of subdivision as the, the, the water system is capable of supporting. The applicant has indicated their willingness to work with staff on a mix of permitted housing options at the time of, of subdivision application. Additionally, the Fair Housing Council of Oregon reviewed this application, provided no objection to the staff's goal, goal 10 findings or the zone change in whole. Moving on to public facilities, which is goal, goal 11. Requires developmental areas which are, which, which are most easily served by public facilities and services shall be identified and promoted as priority development areas. And that the city shall ensure that adequate erosion control and drainage measures are taken for all buildings and development. The subject property is really in a really good area for future development. Makes sense that given the existing JR Meadows subdivision to the east and then the school and the development to the north, this would allow for the connectivity. I think there's some interest in this brought up at a previous planning commission meeting as well. So this will really allow Carlton to have a little bit more of a, it would allow, allow through traffic to, from JR Meadows to funnel through, out, out to the west instead of just onto the highway to the north. So this will really allow for a little better circulation of traffic as well. Additionally, the city engineer provided some comments specific to public facilities, which are attached as exhibit B, specific to water service and sanitary sewer requirements. It's important to note that in this case, the, the city's water is reaching the capacity. There is a limit to what the city has the capacity to serve at this time. The city engineer has identified that this potential development, as indicated, would have the ability to support future development on that site within the permitted densities. And that future development will also be dependent on, on the increase of, of the, or the, excuse me, the utilization of the concrete pump station in the city sewer, sanitary sewer improvements. Transportation is goal 12. The goal 12 policies and, and goals and policies are listed in the staff report, specifically. Goals and policies are listed in the staff report, specifically policies goal two, B, one, two, three, four, five and seven. Which really prioritizes the, the continuance of, of road and the road system within city in. Compliance and, and concurrence with the city's T S P. I discussed earlier how those, those extension, the road extensions are continuing through in compliance with the T S P. I also want to emphasize that at the time of subdivision, applicable sidewalks, paths. Bike lanes and, and access ways to the school be reviewed in compliance with the development code. And, and again, also that, that a second revised transfer, transfer, or transportation impact analysis, traffic analysis will, will be submitted. As part of the potential future subdivision application. Goal three states that, that there's a goal to increase the use of alternative modes of transportation, walking, bicycling, et cetera. Through improved access, safety and service. Future development of this site, per the zone change, would really improve circulation in this area, specifically access. To the school and, and to the school property in general. New sites would improve sidewalks and streets in the area, which would allow for safer. Pedestrian and bicycle access around the residential parts of the city, specifically in the school. The criterion B lists that the, the use is permitted in the permitted zone can be accommodated on the post-site without exceeding its physical capacity. We already discussed this as well, but again, this will require a future subdivision application to develop. But the site is sixteen acres and is capable of accommodating the, the housing types permitted in the R two zone with. Street and public infrastructure improvements. Similarly, criterion C states that allowed uses in the proposed zone can be established in compliance with the development crimes in this ordinance. That the applicant has submitted a rough preliminary conceptual subdivision design that shows that. That, that the site is capable of meeting the development standards of the R two zone, but again, these, these will be looked at more specifically. At the time of future subdivision, as will streets, sidewalks, landscaping, that kind of thing. D is that adequate public facilities, services and transportation networks are in place. We already really addressed these, these comments in gold in the findings for goals eleven and twelve, which are. Public facilities and transportation respectively, so I'm not going to restate those. And criteria E states that for residential zone changes, the criteria listed in the purpose statement for the proposed zone shall be met. The R two zone states that, that it shall provide for single family and duplex housing at an average density of ten dwelling units per acre or less. The R two district is consistent with the new residential medium density comprehensive plan designation. So again, the, the indication is, is that this will provide. Single family and duplex housing at, at the, at less than ten acres, which, which meets the standard. It will also. Allow for the development of a potential. Mix of, of lot sizes within, within the R two zone. And has the ability to support those multiple housing uses. Or housing type, excuse me. And lastly, criterion F is that the following additional criteria shall be used to review all non-residential changes, this is a residential change, so these criteria do not apply. So based on the findings listed in the staff report and as referenced in exhibit B. Staff recommends, planning commission recommended approval of zone change twenty twenty one to city council. Thank you.
As usual, that was very thoughtful and very thorough report, thank you, Mr. Jenkins. At this time, we will take any preliminary questions from commissioners for staff. We'll go ahead and go in order, I don't think Mr. Bandy has arrived, so we will go with Commissioner Fernandez Madrid.
There we go, sorry, I've been having some connectivity issues and some of what Kyle said was garbled, so. If I'm repeating anything he may have said, pardon me for that. I've got a number of concerns. I guess I'll start with page eleven. Quick question, and I, I do have, I guess I'll start with my questions and hopefully Kyle, you can clarify those for me. So on page eleven and we're at seventeen point eight oh point one three oh. Section C, proposed properties adequate in size and shape to facilitate these uses allowed in the proposed zone. And under this findings in that first paragraph, it said, should the developer choose to construct duplexes or attach single family dwellings? Yada, yada. My question is, is that up to the developer, because I know in listening to frequent council discussions. They seem to be not able to have any teeth to enforce what our, what our. Projected or desired seventy five, twenty five ratio is, so I'm just curious as to how that process works. And is there any way? If this ends up being developed, to actually have a higher density, maybe even an R three. And fewer single family homes.
Sure, that's a good question, so this, so zone change is really the policy by which that would be implemented and I, I. There have been, as you mentioned, some concerns that the R two zone, which is intended to be a. Medium density residential does not actually limit. Potential future development via subdivision application to higher density dwelling, so. That is something you would address at this, at this time, if you feel like. The policy that you just referenced is not being addressed via the R two zone. Then that is something you could state as part of this application. The develop, from, from staff's perspective, you know, we've spoken to the developer about this, the need for more of the duplex style dwelling. And, and the attached single family. And they have indicated a willingness, although again, as, as you are aware, that's not something that once we get to the subdivision level that we can say. You have to do, so if that's something that you're concerned about now would be the time to.
Well, to, to raise those questions, okay, and then I'm sure others have questions too, but moving on on that same page, page eleven. Criteria E, as an elephant, the proposed change zone will have no substantial impact on the abutting property or uses thereof. I don't, I don't believe that that's so, and specifically, my question is, looking at Cleveland Street. From pine over to the grade school where this would tie in, so those four city blocks. Which would have to be widened, sidewalks added, bike lanes, et cetera, who pays for that?
So that would be on, on the developer who's developing those sites. To pay for improvements to those streets, and if I'm understanding your, your question correctly. And I, I guess that provision is, is the way I'm, I interpret that is that there would be no substantial negative impacts, obviously with any development, there's going to be a impact. With regards to. You know, need for development, construction. You know, that kind, those kind of uses, there's always going to be impacts, but the way I interpreted that, a provision of the, or that. Criteria is that there'll be specifically negative impacts.
Yeah, I mean, certainly all those homes along that street. And that is the main feeder where the school buses turn and people taking their kids to school turn. And looking in at the traffic study, which is further in my questions. You know, on the AM peak flows, I believe it was a hundred people making a left turn, and that's people coming south. On Pine Street or forty seven and turning left there, so during the AM peak flow, it's a hundred cars at this point. And the other. Real head scratcher for me was that looking at the date that this was conducted, and that was April of this year. That's during a pandemic and there were no kids in school. So I would think that would be substantially misleading. Because those aren't going to be usual traffic flows once school is back in session. And then if they're talking about adding eighty one more lots. And having that traffic flow through there. I would think that that would have a substantial, very substantial impact on the abutting property for the folks that live along that street. Let me see here. Also, oh, also, and this is a question, and maybe you have something in front of you. In the pine and Cleveland traffic study. Page one thirty eight. There was no crash data for that particular intersection, and I know that they studied several different intersections as in feeder lines and, you know, main access and whatnot. I look at that as, you know, certainly. One of the main feeder streets, because as I said, that's where all the school buses and all the people taking their kids to school turn. And does anybody else in their packet, this is page one thirty eight, have that crash data, because mine did not have it. Because all, all, all the other intersections showed four years worth of crash data and I, I didn't have any. So is there anybody has that in front of them that can enlighten me?
Don't have that exact page pulled up. That may be a good question to ask the developer at the time when, when you have the time to ask, ask them the question, they'd be able to provide a little more information on, on how the study was conducted.
Okay. I mean, it was very comprehensive and I, you know, it was substantial and I took a lot of time, I probably. Spent a good six to eight hours examining all that data. But further in that report on page one fifty four, one fifty five, their levels of. Well, their, their definition in T that had to do with levels of service. Put it into, let me get that page because it was. Somewhat telling. There it is. So using that data, which I think is flawed, because as I said, it was conducted during the pandemic and not when kids were in school. Level of service E. Using these traffic flows says that there will be restricted speeds, very long traffic delays at traffic signals. And traffic volumes near capacity, this is an unsignaled. Intersection, I'm talking about pine and Cleveland. But it says flow is unstable, so any interruptions, no matter how minor, will cause queues to form, which already happens if you live in that neighborhood during school, school times. So it would add to the queues that form and service to deteriorate to the level of service F. It says that unsignalized intersections level service E or better is generally considered acceptable. But then if it goes into F, which I believe adding that much more traffic and especially if there's a tie into Meadows one and two. Extreme delay is resulting in long queues, may interfere with other traffic movements, stoppages of long duration. Speeds drop to zero, frequent signal cycles, but it says. Level of service F typically results when vehicle arrival rates, so those hundred cars in that very short amount of time. Is greater than capacity, considered unacceptable by most drivers, so again, just looking at their own data. That was concerning to me, and then the other thing I want to ask about. Is. Let me find my notes on that. When we got to page thirteen. Well, there's recreation and economic development questions I have. And maybe you can expand upon this a little bit, but it seemed during the recreation goal eight. Where there was the number three, continued availability and use of school owned recreational facilities, seemed to me that there was a very heavy emphasis. On this potential planned subdivision. Using the schoolyard as a park. And I don't know how the school would feel about that. But that, that to me was not really acceptable. And then again, the widening of that street, the other thing, and I think that we have to keep this in the back of our minds. Is under recreation goal number four, development of bicycle pedestrian pathways. I'm not sure if the Yamhaless West Sider Trail is actually dead. I think it could be a political football that maybe gets revived under a different set of board of commissioners. And so if you had the Yamhaless Trail also coming through there. I, I think that the, that the traffic grid would get substantially more complex, we'll just leave it at that. Also on page thirteen, economic development. Number thirteen, Carlton shall encourage business development. That retains, strengthens and expands business spaces in Carlton. So on the plan. And that was Meadows as well as this sixteen acre parcel. They show, and thank goodness, urban growth boundary as well as the comprehensive plan is hopefully going to be. Reviewed quickly and soon. I don't see that we're encouraging retaining businesses if you have a vineyard in, in. Right with streets going through it according to that map. And both of those vineyards that are impacted, one to the other side of Meadows, this one with this particular development. Which would be Stone Griffin Vineyard. These were all planted in the last twenty or thirty years before those codes, or excuse me, after those codes were, were done. And obviously it would have a direct impact if they had streets. Routed through their vineyards. Both of those wineries have tasting rooms in town. And so I don't think with economic development as our goal. That that would help either of those folks, so again, I've got some concerns about that. The other thing is the population figure. And this is on page fourteen, the goal ten, to prevent new developments when all urban services become available. Public water, sanitary sewers, storm drainage, solid waste, streets, parks, et cetera. I've touched on the streets, the parks, the recreation facilities. My big question here is on page fourteen. Number one, findings. The engineers' comments are that we have sufficient water and treatment capacity to serve the population of twenty hundred. So our current population is hovering slightly over twenty two hundred. Given the engineers' matrix for extrapolating the population of J R Meadows one and two. Using two point eight three, or excuse me, two point five three, so. I don't think five three is a, a complete person, I don't know if that's the head and the shoulders or the legs, but. If it's five three, I would round it up to three people per, per household. I think that's grossly underestimating because those homes being built are four bedroom homes. But even using their matrix, if it's three people per, per home, and that's two hundred and two homes total, including the apartments. That would give you four hundred and ninety one. I ran that with a three percent margin of error. And. That minimum pop, that minimum population would put us at twenty six eighty one. Without the subdivision that we're talking about. Using that three percent margin, it would push, push us just over the twenty seven hundred oh six. So I think we're shaving it awfully close in terms of our water use, based on the engineers' report that twenty eight hundred is, is capacity. Moving on to number two, to conserve and improve structurally sound existing housing stock in Carlton. And under the findings there, within already developed areas, a variety of infill housing types should be made available. Using appropriate density design standards, I know. That we have in the past, not this meeting, approved infill housing with the reduced lot lines. And I would just say, I, I don't think, you know, that, that this land. Needs to be changed, and I'd like to see us use first. These available infill properties and maybe we could actually hit our goal of that twenty five percent. Mixed or higher density type of, of housing. And it would be nice to maybe tap the brakes until our water comes online, because currently we're on McNinville's water. And we do not have a long term agreement in place with them that could potentially be coming. But I for one, I'm very nervous to approve something like this without these items in place. So I've got other questions, but I know it's going to be a long meeting and other people have concerns, so I'm gonna stop there. Thank you, Kyle.
Sure, so I can, I can address a few of those, and I think Gordon's on the call, so he might be able to better answer your question about the utilities. First of all, with, I, I want to emphasize, and I, I, I think you're, you're aware of this already, but I do want to emphasize that the idea is, is that when we're doing these projections. They would still have to be met at the time of any future application, so if the, if this was to be approved, for instance, and. And the developer was then to come in with a subdivision application in, say, a year or two. They would have to show that based on whatever they're submitting, that the city has adequate. Facilities, both water, sewer, all of those to meet that, to, to serve whatever new buildings they're proposing, because a zone. Because a zone changes in authorizing any new buildings, it's just giving the opportunity for future construction. So if there was not enough capacity at the time of the future subdivision application during a potential pre-application meeting, the city would then tell the developer, hey, we don't have enough, you know, capacity to support these potential buildings, you know, we can't, you know, if you submitted an application for a subdivision, it's likely that staff in the planning commission would, would recommend denial because they wouldn't have that capacity. So the, the specific criteria, and although these policies, you know, are a little more abstract with, with, you know, there is, you know, enough capacity to serve the potential design of these, these lots. The specific criterion states that the, the capacity improvements are planned for the future. So that's kind of what, you know, what we're looking at as, as far as staff from that perspective. But again, I want to emphasize that, that should a subdivision application come in and there was not enough capacity, whether water sewer to serve those lots, we would, you know, tell the applicant, hey, this is not going to be something that the city can, can, can do with this time. Second part of that is, is, is I completely agree that, that the city's infill housing potential needs to be looked at. And we have certainly had a few and there'll be, there'll be another infill type housing coming in shortly. But this land is already within the urban growth boundary, which is designated for, you know, urban uses under the housing needs analysis. So we're not, it's not, we're not, we're not expanding the urban growth boundary and allowing for, you know, housing needs that may not be justified under a housing needs analysis. I think the city definitely needs to look at that, doing, doing something like a housing needs analysis in the future. But as far as the specific property, this land's already within the urban growth boundary. So that's, that's one element of it. Parks and open space specifically, those are looked at more from a subdivision level because the criteria governing those requirements are found in the government, in the development code. I just wanted to make, you know, the, the planning commission aware of the comprehensive policy, comprehensive plan policies that govern those development code processes. So for instance, you mentioned the RFP that the, that the city's putting out for comprehensive plan work. That's a great opportunity to look at these policies and say, hey, the development code doesn't match exactly what, you know, we think these policies are, are indicating, or we want to change the policies and look at those policies and, and changing those potential policies to require, you know, additional open space or, you know, landscaping, whatever, you know, whatever it may be at that time. So I think those are kind of my general responses. Gordon, did you have a second to speak to some of the, the water concerns?
Hello? Can you guys hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Ah, good. I've been punching numbers and and to get unmuted. So yeah, I can address some of those. If you do look at the traffic report, they do assume a 2% increase of traffic per year. So they, they tried to accommodate for what occurred with the COVID by assuming a, a straight line increase in traffic. With regards to the water, your point is well taken. If you take a look at the water system, it is getting close to what it can provide. And the, what we are looking at is the statement that says the facilities must be in place or planned. We do have improvements planned for, some of them are in construction right now. Specifically the transmission line from the water treatment plant way up in the hills down to the concrete reservoir that is on Meadow Lake Drive and some ceiling of that reservoir. And it's currently measured that we're losing 60 to 100,000 gallons per day through leaks from that reservoir and from the pipe. And so we anticipate gaining back a lot of that. We actually did find a pipe through the side of the concrete reservoir that had been hidden. That was the cause of the leak. So we know that that leak will be fixed. With regards to the number of people per home, that's always an average. So obviously we can't have 2.5 people unless you count babies as half the people. But that, that's simply an average. And certainly after the transmission line goes in and you see what the impacts are, we look at again, how much we've saved and how much we can serve. And at any time of an application, this is all reviewed again. Our best information that we have right now is that if this rezoning occurred and if the development occurred as shown in a rough layout, we would be right on the edge of the water and we'd be relying on that project that's underway right now to save a significant amount of water. Now, obviously there's potential for the future to connect to McMinnville Water and Light. We already have the physical intertie matter of getting an agreement. That's a long-term issue. Right now we, we are on McMinnville Water and Light. That's a temporary one-year agreement that allowed us to do this transmission line. So your point is well taken. And that, that's what the data says. And if, if you do go down and look at the wastewater, we're really tight on the wastewater too, and we really can't serve those additional lots until the Han Creek Pump Station is completed. That bid just occurred. Construction's about to start, probably take about a year. And the wastewater treatment plant has to be upgraded. We're just in design on that now. So that, before that is completed might be two years. Two to three years probably.
And then just a, just a quick question.
Yeah.
That was, I, I really appreciate you being on this call because it's great to have people with your expertise that we can ask these questions. But just as far as a clarification, because I did see the pipe going in, I think two years ago from West Side Road all the way up Meadow Lake. So which, which part of the, the feed lines? Is it from Meadow Lake east into town that's leaking? Because all, all that pipe has been replaced going on up Meadow Lake to the reservoir, has it not?
Right, that's replaced. That's not leaking. That was replaced. And I, I think it was either 16 or 18 inch pipe that was put in that allows you to get actually fire flow from the reservoir into town. The pipe that's leaking is from the reservoir going west into the hills. And it's about six miles of pipe. It's really, really old steel pipe. We just had, just to let you know, last week, we had a leak in that pipe, the existing pipe, right up near the water treatment plant. And we knew we were losing 50,000 gallons a day through that leak. That got patched. But that's the sort of thing that we're doing this pipeline project to avoid in the future.
Right. And I, and I also want to thank you for all the hard work that your department does. I know that public works is always overworked and underfunded. But for instance, I mean, some of my concerns come from the age of the, of the grid in town, which it's my understanding, most of which is in excess of 50 years old. And all of these feeder streets, all of these things that feed these new planned developments, you know, will be new pipe. But it's those feeder lines. For instance, when the, when the main broke across from City Hall in front of the Legion Hall and all of these Carlton didn't have water for four or five or six hours. These are the kinds of things that eat me up at night because God help us if we had a fire. So I just, I, I really appreciate you giving us that information. I was running my own numbers, you know. I've got a little bit of a background in management consulting, so I feel pretty, pretty current about, you know, pretty confident about that. But you're the person in the trenches, quite literally doing the work. So again, really, really appreciate your input.
So with regards to the distribution system in town, there was a project, I, I think it was like eight years ago. I wasn't here then, but that improved some significant lines within the community that provides a lot of fire flow to a lot of the community. There's some 10 inch and eight inch and 12 inch pipes that were put in. Doesn't get everywhere and there's still certainly areas that are challenged for fire flow and have old pipes, but there was significant improvement that was done.
Right. Well, this is a, this is a, a big project even for a small town. And I know that, you know, maintenance is, is very important. So again, I just, you know, as a resident, 30 year resident here, I've seen us grow and I've seen the struggles, you know, within the department. And I know it's hot, dirty work, but you guys rock it. So.
Well, you can thank Brian Burnham for that. He really puts in a lot of time for you guys.
Yeah. At, at my old house, Brian came and daylighted one of the drainage pipes there that wasn't on any map or on any, any plans anywhere, but he knew it was there and I knew it was there. So I've always gotten good service from you. So thank you.
I think that's it for me for right now.
All right. Sorry about that. Our next commissioner Graham is going to present any questions that he has.
I just looking at through it on page 14, it says the Han Creek Pump Station will be planned for construction in late 2022. On page 17, it says Han Creek Pump Station has been designed and bid out in August of 21. Construction is anticipated to be completed for June 22. And then on page 18, it says under the wasteland facilities, improvements are under design scheduled to become construction late 2022. And my, I, my question is, does that mean that there can be no subdivision here for about a year? Is that, I mean, we're making, if we make the zone change, there's no going to be a subdivision done for basically about a year, I believe. I think that's.
I can answer that. That's a little bit off. The Han Creek Pump Station, which serves this. They will be starting construction sometime soon. Probably will be done by the end of next summer. And the wastewater treatment plant upgrade design is in the middle of design, probably won't be bidding out until next summer. And may not be completed until near the end of 2023. And that upgrade would be required for this subdivision.
Yeah. So I, I can speak to that a little bit too. So I'll give the example of, of, of JR. There was a condition of approval put on that, that application that said that the upgrades to the, the pump station, the sewer system have to be, have to be completed before the recording of the final plat. So those, the, the final plat for JR two has not been recorded yet because those upgrades have not been completed. So similarly, if, if you were to, if a subdivision application was to come in in the future, that could be something that, that you could say either it doesn't meet the criteria or it could be denial. Staff on our part, we've been letting, you know, potential applicants know that, hey, these, you know, these upgrades need to be complete before any kind of construction can go on. So there's a couple of different checks in there, whether it's through condition of approval or just, you know, discouraging potential applications, or there's a few, there's a few methods for ensuring that there's no construction prior to, you know, these improvements being, being made. And that's certainly something that, that we're aware of and that, you know, when, when we're looking at the criteria for any kind of subdivision, that, that's something that we're looking at. You know, making sure that no buildings are, are built obviously without capacity.
And then just a, a quick question, Kyle. What's the total number of lots JR one and two?
There's, I believe 94. I believe it's 90 single family plus the, the additional 22, or excuse me, 30 units of, of multifamily. Approximately.
And, and JR two?
Yeah. So that, that's, that's counting. I believe those.
Both of them together.
Yeah, combined.
90 plus the, it's 32 apartment units because it was 10 and 22.
That's right, 32. Yeah.
And then while we have the water guy, just other quick question. Trying to understand the, the, the grid work and the supply within the city limits that we have. So the far east Old McMinnville Road, that's, you know, been used as like the, the main construction road for, for JR. What is the condition of, and what type of pipes and water feed supplies do we have out there from Main Street down Old McMinnville Highway? Were those slated to be graded as part of JR?
Old McMinnville Highway is actually outside the city and there's no water mains there. There's a new water mains down Main Street, and then there's an eight inch pipe that goes all the way south. And there were hydraulic models run based on the fire flow that was actually measured at Main Street. And those show that there's adequate fire flow all the way through JR Meadows two. Now, if the system, if the lot that we're talking about is constructed sometime in the future, obviously because of some of the wastewater issues, that water system would be looped back up to Third Street, which just makes your, your system stronger. Whenever it's looped, that means that flow's coming from multiple directions.
Right.
And it also gives you more reliability, meaning you got to break somewhere and you turn out the water, you only
Yeah.
impact maybe a block or two because you're looped and you can get the water elsewhere.
And the, and the eight inch pipe you said going south, that's from Main Street down which street?
Seven. All the way through JR Meadows two. And all, all the pipes in JR Meadows two are all eight, eight inches as well.
Okay. And, and going to Carlton, well, that's right. You, you weren't here, but actually that was at the, I had to get a lot nine adjustment when I built my house and I was at that meeting. And I think they said that they put a two inch wider than code pipe with an eye to future development to do Carlton Crest. And so that's what we have on. And so that's what we have on East Main Street to the city limits and the terminus at. Where is it, is is the terminus at Medoffrey?
The terminus of the water line is essentially the bridge.
Okay. Yeah.
Uh, there there is some water line that goes to the other side, but it's only on Main Street, it doesn't go. South and there is a a small water district over there as well that we serve.
Already Commissioner Graham indicated he didn't have any further questions for staff at this time, um, next, I believe we have Commissioner Nordstrom.
Um, yeah, I think most of my questions probably have been answered, I mean, questions about water usage and infrastructure. I think maybe I will just sort of reemphasize. My concern over process and maybe our understanding of process that once it gets rezoned. Whether like. I know that that then changes the process for what we are sort of allowed to do as well, right? So um in terms of the process for rezoning, there's one process and certain criteria. And in terms of the development, there's sort of another set of criteria, although they seem to be a little bit merged here.
I can try that, sorry, I could try to help with that a little bit, so essentially a zone change is discussing about what can be permitted and what. Um, it's more of a high level review versus a subdivision, which is there is objective criteria that the applicant needs to meet. The the zone change is more um by by if you were to approve the rezone, that would give. The applicant to come in, the the ability to come in the future with a potential subdivision in which we would then, you know, review the applicable development criteria. Open space, you know, landscaping, streets, utilities, all that stuff, this is more saying. Is there, you know, the capability to support that use, is that use needed? Uh, does it match with a uh the comprehensive plan policies, all of these things, so there's a little more. I don't know, subjectivity is the right word, but subjectivity for, you know, discussion with whether these policies are met versus with a subdivision where it's a little more. Black and white with regards to the to the zone change or to to the criteria.
Yeah, so just to clarify, because I mean, I think, I think one of the main concerns I have, which was the same one. That we were just hearing about was was the current infrastructure, right, that the infrastructure may not really be ready. For one to two years and and so. Whether whether once we make a zone change, like is the zone change the time to say we don't have the infrastructure? Or is the, once it's changed, the development, the time to say we don't have the infrastructure?
So the criterion for the zone change specifically states that there is planned capacity for for to support the uses. Um, in this case, you know, Gordon has provided, you know, information that seems to indicate that, yes, but also within. There are limits to that capacity, um, and those are outlined in in detail in his comments. Um, a subdivision, if there's not capacity, then the planning commission can just say, no, you know, we don't have this capacity. But most more likely, it wouldn't even get to that stage because staff would tell the applicant, hey, we don't have the capacity at this time, so. Um, it's probably not even worth submitting an application. Um, so the zone change is more about looking forward, uh, is there planned capacity versus current capacity? Because you're not approving actual physical development uh or develop or, you know, additional lots or via subdivision or something like that.
Okay, great, that clarifies it, so then I guess my other question is about, um. You know, on page eleven. Sorry, go back there, um. With the. You know that there's a lack of other comparatively zoned property. Um, I mean, the like JR two isn't even built yet, so I am kind of concerned about the sense that we don't. Have comparatively planned when there's a huge development right next door, that hasn't even been developed yet.
Right, and then again, that's what, that's more of an interpretation, so if if you disagree, you know, my my opinion, my finding on that staff's finding was that. Relative to the the existing residentially zoned land in Carlton, there's, it's mostly R one with quite a bit of R three as well. Most mostly R one, it's almost entirely R one, uh, so relative to those. There is a, there's a relative lack, but if that's something that that the planning commission disagrees with, then that's, you know, something you can cite as a finding.
Yeah, and I and I guess, you know, you've already sort of pointed out that this R two has sort of this weird role. And I I am concerned that we're basically using this sort of technicality above, it's called R two. But it really can look like R one or it can really look like R three, and so we're saying we don't have any other R two, even though we have lots of R one and we have lots of R three. And this is going to be one of those, so I am worried about that and and really sort of specific to that. Um, because they, I mean, I realized that they've just put in a proposal that isn't, like, it was just for sort of purposes. And that that what, how many units go on that is not established. But um what would what would normally be the lots per acre in R one? How many lots would you have per acre in a normal R one, I'm just trying to get a comparison to what they've sort of set out as R two.
I think a good way to look to think about it is is the difference between um R two and R one in this case. Is that higher density is permitted and the single dense or the single uh family detached that is also permitted. Is mandated to be on smaller lot sizes, so the minimum lot size in the R one zone is seventy five hundred square feet. Uh, versus the the lot size in um R two is six thousand square feet, so. Uh, if you look on that subdivision or the the conceptual plan, it shows um smaller lots that would not be permitted in the R one zone. Now, again, if that's, you know, it, I completely understand the 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 concern with with only seeing uh, you know. Uh, single family detached, that's something again that that we've spoken with, and that might be something to ask the applicant about. Uh, but no, they are not mandated to build, uh, if you were to approve the zone change, they are not required to build. Uh, duplex or attached single family in its district.
Yeah, so I just, I think, I I appreciate that, I think you've sort of clarified for me. And I and I guess I will sort of state that, that that I do have this kind of concern that. We're basing this on claiming there isn't comparative building.
Sure.
Comparative um comparatively zoned property, and I I am a little worried that it. Really will kind of look like one of the thing where we do have comparatively zoned property in abundance.
It's, yeah, so it'll be, it would be more about the use in this case, so that's specific criterion. Um, you know, my my finding was that the in terms of zone, that yes, there is comparatively limited land. But maybe your, you know, your concern is with the use specifically, which is understandable.
Um, and I I I think most of my other concerns have already been addressed, so um, so I I don't think I have any further questions, thanks.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Nordstrom, Commissioner Terrell.
Um, I so appreciate the questions that have come so far, they've really answered a lot of questions, but they've also raised a few questions for me. Um, one question I have is um regarding the um. The pump station being completed, and I think what I understood from you, Kyle, was that um. In JR two, there was a condition that the pump station be completed before construction began.
So it's before the before the final plat is recorded, so that. Um, typically, what what staff would recommend is before building permits are issued, but the condition on that. Um, specific approval was that before the final plat is recorded, and the difference between that is that in order. You know, you can plat lots, so you can record the final plat, which actually, um, you know, with with Yamhill County, which. Then the lots will will be shown as as approved. Um, but the condition of approval on that JR two subdivision was that the final plat itself could not be. Uh, approved without those those improvements being completed. Um, again, this is normally something that that would be a, um, and I wasn't around for when this discussion was was held. But normally, that would be a a building permit thing to ensure that the units are not built, the actual buildings are not built until. Um, the the improvements are made, but in this specific instance, it was a uh condition on the final plat. So therefore, the final plat has not been able to be recorded for JR two.
So so I guess what I'm confused about is um how that limits, because that land is graded, there's roads already there. So um if we wanted to do a similar thing to prevent um this new lot. This new land to be developed, um, it seems like once you're putting in roads and regrading. You've substantially changed the property. Um, and at that point, it's no longer agricultural property, like there's no switching back if if the wastewater system. Doesn't get done for ten years or or whatever, whatever happens.
Right, and that 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 would be a a decision of the planning commission, you could, you know, this, and again, this is, this is, I want to make sure we're staying on the zone change. Because we're not reviewing a subdivision application, but um in the event, the the zone change is just approving. Uh, the land for a potential future subdivision application. If if you were to make the findings at the time of future subdivision application, that there wasn't enough capacity. Um, you know, you could make those findings to say, hey, this doesn't meet X, Y, and Z criteria related to public facilities. And therefore, we can't approve it, the way that the JR Meadows was handled is that there is a condition of approval added instead, so that's just, there's, there's multiple ways to do that. Um, you know, from a staff perspective, generally, we we recommend, we did do it as a condition of approval, but it's, it's, it's. Um, you know, can go either way, but again, this is not a subdivision, this is a zone change, so we're not reviewing any kind of development on the site yet.
So if if the zone change is approved, it's just, you don't condition that on no construction beginning.
That's right.
Approved and that's it, and then.
It just changes the the designation or the the zoning of the land, it it allows for a future application to be submitted, but. I I would think of it just in terms of this is the first check um in the development process, um, this allows for future development. Um, but it doesn't allow for any actual construction or even um lots to be plotted.
Okay, so, okay, and then my other question is, um, Commissioner Madrid asked about, um, like the percentage of. Um, required multifamily or town homes on this, and you said that that would, this would be an appropriate time to place conditions on that.
No, so so I, we cannot place condition, this was something that was also done for for the previous for JR two that.
Right.
I want to make sure it does not happen again, that's not something that should be done for a zone change, this is a, if you feel that that policy is not met. You can make findings saying that that policy is not met and send the application, you know, or deny the application and and, you know, the developer developer will know that you want to see higher density. If you do feel, if you adopt the findings in the staff report, um, which kind of stated that there was an intent for more duplex and and attached single family. Um, then that would, you know, allow those kind of uses to be allowed, but this this would be the time to 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 make those comments.
To make the comments that we do indeed want to see that, we don't want it to be like a choice, like if I feel like building a duplex and that.
Well, so so right, if you think that 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 goal is not met or that policy is not met by this application. Um, you know, you could, you could technically make that, you know, finding for for why you would vote to deny the application, that would be an example of that. We cannot condition the application to say. We're we're mandating duplexes on this, does that make sense?
No, I it does, but how would we know if they're going to meet that goal? If they, we, I mean, if we're not, if we're not approving a subdivision, that's, that's the thing, I, that's the thing, it's like, how would, just by saying. Oh, we can do R two development, which allows for those purposes, how would we, I mean, like, how would you say, no, I don't think it does. I don't know how that would happen.
Well, I mean, that's, I'm not gonna, you know, make the findings for you, but if you if you, if you thought that that policy was not met, you would have to, you know. Make that, make those findings, um, and that, that's, that's kind of why, in my eyes, the 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 policy states that there's. While there is a desire for more multifamily housing, there's also an intent for more duplex and town attached town homes. Um, development and combined with kind of the capacity concerns that we're looking at, I think that this is appropriate. Um, but no, there's, and it's just, I think, some other commissioners and council members that have expressed concern with. Um, that there's no specific, if you were to approve this application, there's no specific way to mandate. Um, the development of those specific housing types, because this is not a uh subdivision application, or there's no, there's. They're unrelated applications, I suppose.
Okay, so I understand, thank you, that, that took me a while, okay, um, so then, here's, here is my um. Other concern with this is um with transportation and um. I I think about Third Street, um, and I consider transportation infrastructure to include not only car traffic. But also the infrastructure that supports pedestrian or bicycle access, especially to our school and. Um, that that um requirement in our comprehensive plan. That we reduce conflict between different modes of transportation. Um, with the fractured and discontinuous sidewalks, um, the sidewalks are not even um. The wide, the correct width for a collector's street, um, there's a two block bike lane that just randomly appears. Where there's no construction and then that's discontinuous, which is super confusing for cyclists, right? They don't know whether to use it or not use it, um, and then also with um Seventh Street, which is mentioned in the AKS report. And they don't even acknowledge that there are bike lanes in that, on that, on the table on page. Um, sixty in our packet, um, they list the streets that would. Uh, be would have impact on this development or potential development. And they say South Seventh Street doesn't even have bicycle lanes. When I know it does have bicycle lanes because I'm, the city has told me they exist, they're just not striped. Um, so I feel like there may not be the pro- the. Um, the transportation infrastructure that would support even more traffic, especially right in front of the school. Where we know children are going to be walking back and forth and bicycles need to be walking back and forth. Um, I just feel like that multimodal transportation is a vital public facility, and I don't think we have that in place yet in Carlton. And I don't know how we add more more car traffic without supporting our pedestrian and bicycle and multimodal transportation.
Sure, so I I'll I'll say that um these newer developments are required. Um, whereas some of the past development Carlton has those fractured sidewalks and inconsistent, you know, widths and, you know, all of that. New developments are required to meet the code standard, um, you know, unless they get a variance from the planning commission. Um, so again, this is more of a subdivision, something that would happen in subdivision time. But that is something, for instance, that they would, that the a future developer would have to come in and meet in regard with regards to. Adequate road width, sidewalks, um, you know, landscaping, all of those, all of those concerns that that. Uh, you know, are required within the the the, I believe it's seventeen point six four, which are the street and sidewalk standards.
It is, yeah.
So, um, that again, that's, that's not really the zone change here, but it. In my, in my opinion, and in the findings that were included in the staff report, this would actually add the connectivity. Because of the ability to extend, you know, actual functioning sidewalks and um, you know, through JR Meadows to to this, to the school and.
Yes, but but here's my concern is where um this subdivision or this potential development. Will impact existing infrastructure that we have in town, it will, it will add significant um traffic to Third Street. And it, we are supposed to have um infrastructure in place to support it. And I don't believe that we have safe infrastructure in place on Third Street that would support more traffic being added to it, I just don't. I feel like we're just setting up pedestrians and cyclists and the and car drivers for many potential conflicts. But and that that concludes my, oh, no, wait, there is one more thing, no, never mind, no, that's all. Because the rest of it would have to do with subdivision, so those are my concerns.
Thank you, Commissioner Terrell, I believe the only other commissioner outstanding would be myself and for the sake of everybody. I will reserve my comments and questions for following the presentation by the applicants and parties for, against, and neutral here. Um, our next step is to proceed to receive any written testimony, um, I'm not aware of any that has been received.
That has been submitted to me.
Um. We have not received anything at City Hall, um, if there is somebody listening that believes that they have submitted something, I'd invite you to raise your hand. You can use the reaction function on Zoom to indicate a hand raise or a thumbs up or simply turn on your camera, smile big and wave. I'm just following the uh, yeah, like from. I'm just following the outline from Council. I see one individual, Jim and Sherry. Did you submit written comments to City Hall? Jim and Sherry, if you can hear me, you are muted. And we'll ask one more time. Did you submit written comments for City Hall? Otherwise, we will invite you to contribute in the oral testimony forthcoming.
Okay, can you hear me now?
I can hear you, sir.
Okay, this is Jim Bandy. I am a commissioner. Unfortunately, I was unable to be there at the beginning of this meeting. I would like to state unequivocally that I totally agree with Susie. The infrastructure on Third Street will not support another development using that as a primary source of transportation. There's, those are my, that's my biggest concern, that elementary school and the, the fact that that will run traffic vastly into Main Street again without any traffic control on Main Street. And I just don't understand how we can make it so that it it's easier for those kinds of terrible things to occur. So I am not happy with the concept of moving forward with a zone change at this point in time.
Thank you, Commissioner. This time is specifically for questions for staff. Do you have any questions for staff, sir?
Yeah, I, I would like to understand how staff looks at what I just stated is an obvious issue that will come up, not might come up, will come up if the development goes on to that property. How do they look at that? Unfortunately, they're going to tell me that there is no way that we can, based because of the comprehensive plan, there's no way that they can say anything except it meets the comprehensive plan. I'm sure that's what you're going to say, right, Kyle?
No, that is actually incorrect. If you feel like you do not, that this proposal does not meet those criteria, you may state why, you know, what criteria you do not believe those meet. The staff report outlines the comments that are the, the thoughts of, of staff and the staff review, but you know, you are free, of course, to disagree with those comments and make findings to the contrary.
Okay, thank you very much. I made it brief because I wasn't around for the whole thing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bandy. At this time, I will close the period for receiving any written testimony. None has been received and none have invited themselves or announced themselves on our Zoom. Our next step is to open the public hearing for testimony. Time will be limited for the applicant for thirty minutes, which will be split between the initial presentation and rebuttal. I will keep track of the start and end times. And then when the opportunity comes for rebuttal, I will let the applicant know just how much time remains. Followed, following the applicant's initial presentation will be three minutes for any individual or entity in favor of, three minutes for any individual or entity opposed to, or three minutes for any individual or entity which is neutral to this pending zone change. Again, after that, we will have the rebuttal from the applicant and then we'll close the public hearing. Like to invite the applicant, Chad Davis Construction, or your designated representative to commence with your presentation to us this evening. And thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioners. This is Mark Hoyt of Sherman Sherman Johnny and Hoyt, part of the develop, the team working with the applicant here. In a few minutes, AKS, I'm going to turn this over to AKS Engineering and they'll introduce the team in full, but in the purpose of moving us forward and minimizing time, we'd like to save ten minutes for rebuttal. I'm here on behalf of Chad Davis Construction, who is here on behalf of the DeGraw family, who's owned this property for a substantial amount of time and part of, been part of the Carlton community for that period of time. I just want to briefly review the scope of the application, the role of the planning commission, and what this process should look like. And touch base on a couple of the things I've heard raised by commissioners, because I think they're raising concerns that, that any member of a community would have and are rightfully raising those. This is a zone change application for property inside an urban growth boundary. That means that this property has been committed to urbanization. The question then becomes, what is the appropriate manner to urbanize this property? And what I'm hearing in a lot of the comments is that there's discomfort between, because of the request for the R two zoning. And yet, if you look at the Car, the Carlton Zone Code, it really is about the only designation that appropriately fits this property. There is too much R one already in the city. There is a more need for more multifamily. The R three zone doesn't fit this property because the R three zone is designed for multifamily in close proximity to substantial commercial and public development, which you don't have here. It's designed to cluster people near public facilities. And that's, this property is not in that position. And so as you look at this property, there's really only the R two designation for it to fit. There is a lot of question and a lot of struggle here, understandably and appropriately so, with the infrastructure and its ability to support this development. A couple of things that are very important. No land development application can be approved for this site unless all the applicable criteria are met. And those criteria require that all those services be available. And so what's being reviewed here is, are there planned facilities available to meet this site? And I think what you've heard unquestionably from staff is that there are. There's a question regarding Third Street's capacity. The way Third Street gets improved is for the city to generate revenue, to make those improvements, to add those improvements, to allow that transportation improvements take place. That revenue comes through development. Much of the existing water improvements, much of the existing sewer improvements, pump station improvements are being paid for by J R Meadows one and two. So this is one of the paths to that. And one of the things that AKS Engineering will highlight in a moment is that this process is, you're not going to see occupancy of these structures until twenty twenty five. The twenty twenty two land division application would come through, twenty twenty three land division improvements would start. Residents' construction wouldn't start until twenty twenty four with occupancy not taking place until twenty twenty five. So we're talking about a four year process here, during which time those improvements that are, have been about which concern has been expressed will be made. So the staff, I thought, did an excellent job of outlining the criteria. AKS Engineering is going to go through that criteria and address what it does, or how that criteria is satisfied, reinforcing some of the conclusions that I think you've heard in the staff report. So I want to emphasize what is here before the planning commission, what the legal standards are that the planning commission has to apply. And that really boils down to are there small residential lot developments needed to assist the city in developing needed housing? And I don't think there's any question. The answer is yes. Population projections are well ahead of projected amounts. The city needs residential housing. It needs small lot residential housing, not large lot in R one. Can those lots be developed and connected with, with the existing facilities? You've heard from staff that those planned facilities are in place and at the zone change level, that's all you need. Far more scrutiny is appropriated and should be provided when a land development application is presented, but there's not currently one before the commission. And then finally, are adequate services are available? And the answer is it certainly looks so. Staff's concluded so. Their concerns have been expressed about Third Street. But again, the way that's going to get improved is by the city allowing reasonable prudent development of R two zone land to address the need for residential housing to generate the revenue for the city to make those improvements. With that, I want to turn it over to AKS Engineering, who will run through the specific criteria and how those are addressed, and address some of the more technical questions regarding some of the traffic issues.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Mark. My name is Chris Goodell with AKS Engineering. And we have a a graphic presentation. I wanted to share my screen. I think I'm going to be able to do that here. This one, Jack? Okay. So, uh, thank you again, Chair Stewart, members of the planning commission staff. My name is Chris Goodell. I'm with AKS Engineering and Forestry. Our address is one two nine six five Southwest Herman Road, Walton, Oregon nine seven zero six two. We're here on behalf of the property owner and applicant. This evening, we prepared the, the land use application that you have before you. And as Mark mentioned, this is our, the team that's involved. We've got, you know, the, the applicant Chad Davis Construction, the property owners, Mark Hoyt, Lancaster Mobley provided traffic engineering, and our firm provided a variety of other services for this application. So I, in, in short, I Kyle did a very exhaustive review of the application and mainly the approval criteria. And I have a little bit of that here, too. So there's definitely some overlap. I'll try to minimize that. But there is some material here that that wasn't in Kyle's report. So that'll be new material that'll be, it's worth discussing. So on this screen here, it shows the, the subject property. I think everybody knows where it is, sixteen acres. It's been in the city limits since nineteen eighty one. This here shows the property's comprehensive plan, and it's all the surrounding properties and are basically agricultural, holding to the south and east. And then recently to the east, further northeast is, is R two zoning. Or some top plan designation. So this application has been mentioned a couple of times as a zone change to R two to accommodate future single family detached homes. And it could definitely accommodate attached homes as well. The R two zoning allows that. That's one of, I think, the main differences between R one and R two. So the, the criteria that are relevant to the application are listed here on this slide. And I'll go into a little bit of detail in each one of these bullet points here in the next couple of slides. So the first criteria is the proposed zone is appropriate for the comprehensive plan use designation on the property and consistent with the description of policies of the applicable comprehensive plan, land use app classification. So as you, our application included detailed findings discussing how those goals are met. You heard from your staff as to how those goals are met. This is the next approval criteria for the zone change. The uses permitted in the proposed zone can be accommodated on the proposed site without exceeding its physical capacity. In this case, the R two zone would generally involve a subdivision, which would include things like streets, underground utilities, sidewalks, and then areas for, for homes. And we, in our application, we did include a very conceptual potential future development plan for the property that showed how that could be accommodated on site. So this is the, the next criteria is, says allowed uses in the proposed zone can be established in compliance with the development requirements of this title. So in this case, the residential subdivision meeting that development standards for the R two zone can definitely be accommodated on the sixteen acre site. That's in part, again, shown by our conceptual future subdivision plan that was included. This is one that's been given quite a bit of attention here this evening. So it relates to the, the ability for a property be served by urban services. And it says adequate public facilities, services, and transportation networks are in place or are planned to be provided concurrently with the development of property. So in this case, with respect to water service, the site can be served, as Gordon mentioned earlier, by looping water lines from new development to the east of the site, through the site, and along the frontage of Yam, the Yamhill Carlton Elementary School to the north. So that the future subdivision of this property would, would include a loop water system, which was discussed. That would provide needed fire flow for the elementary school, which I don't believe has current, currently has adequate fire flow. So that this, if this project went forward and the subdivision was built in the timelines that we're discussing here, that would provide a benefit to the school. In this case, the site can be served with sanitary sewer from new development to the east of the site. There's a few other things that are related to that that I'm going to talk about here in just a minute. With respect to stormwater, the improvements that are being installed to the east of the, of this property are designed to accommodate stormwater from this site. So the pipes have been sized appropriately to accommodate the uphill property, which is, in this case, is the property we're talking about here this evening. With respect to streets and transportation, the site's going to connect to several roads and provide connections that are going to increase both pedestrian and vehicular, and for that matter, bicycle connections, and for emergency vehicle access, for that matter. So I'll show you a plan here in just a minute that shows how the future streets here on this site would be compliant with the city's T S P and provide that kind of connectivity that, that everybody wants so much in their communities. For this one here, it says for residential zone changes, the criteria and the purpose statement for the proposed zone shall be met. So the purpose statement says, the residential medium R two district is to provide for single family and duplex housing at an average density of ten units per acre or less. The R two district is consistent with the new residential medium density comprehensive plan designation. So in this case, uses that are planned are residential, which are permitted. You can have a, a project that meets the, the R two density requirements and the dimensional standards. And those kind of details has, has been talked about here this evening are all confirmed through a, a future subdivision application where much more detailed information is gathered and, and, and provided. So this map here shows, this is the city's transportation system plan, and it's their future street plan. So the, the property here that's subject to the application this evening is kind of grayed out. And it's shown, it shows Cleveland Street, Wilson Street, and East Taylor Street, and then a, a Wilson Street being a collector and the others being local streets. So you can see them here as this is on the city's adopted plan. It also, one, one thing that came up earlier that was discussed was I think roads going through a vineyard property. And that's, I believe, if you look at, on the northeast section here, that's East Half Street and East Washington Street. So really, that's, that's part of the, the city's transportation system plan. So if that property was to urbanize any point in the future, then then this is the city's vision for how those streets would run. But it's not part of an application here before you this evening. It's just simply a reflection of what the city's goals are for this area. So this here is, is a plan that shows the subject site, again in gray, and how the roads that are on the city's T S P, like this future, this plan right here could be accommodated on this property for, through a future subdivision application. So it's, it's very consistent. And this compares the two side by side. So that's really, the point of this slide is to show the kind of connectivity that could be achieved through this property that, that otherwise couldn't be. So there's multiple east-west connecting streets that provide access for, like we said earlier, pedestrians, automobiles, and emergency services to provide all those ways for people to get around. Again, these are, this sort of summarizes the the infrastructure. And I'll, I'll say it, I'll say it again, with respect to streets and transportation, this this zone change provides the opportunity for an application to come before you in the future that provides the kind of connectivity that we just discussed. Again, with respect to sanitary sewer that you heard earlier from Mr. Monroe, that the improvements necessary to the sanitary sewer pump station and the wastewater treatment plant plan are in place. They are, they are being planned. So those, those things are not existing now, but they're being planned, which is what the criteria speaks to. With respect to stormwater, this property drains to the property to the east. So upon those improvements being made, then this site could accommodate stormwater. Again, lot water, the loop water system here that would be created through this subdivision provides fire flow for the Yamhill Carlton Elementary School. And none of these things would be in place. Obviously, the, the zone change does not include any development of, physical, physical development of the property. But as Kyle mentioned earlier, a subdivision wouldn't be approved if it didn't have water capacity. And in this case, I'm going to show you a timeline here just a second that shows how that capacity will be in place in the future. Kyle also mentioned that the way, or maybe it was Mr. Hoyt, I think maybe both of them mentioned that, the way that a lot of the way, or maybe it was Mr. Hoyt, I think maybe both of them mentioned that the way that a lot of city projects to improve infrastructure get constructed is, is by way of, of development. And, and this is what was being alluded to is one thing. One example here is in SDC fees. So each dwelling unit, whether it's an attached or detached or what have you, when that building permit is, is pulled, there's an assessment made and there's a park SDC, a sanitary sewer SDC, a stormwater SDC, transportation SDC and a water SDC. So you see those numbers here. And if this property is to be rezoned and then developed in the future with dense, that are consistent with the R2 district, you'd see a total payment of about two, over $2 million. That's what this shows in terms of SDCs that would go to the city. There's also a construction excise tax that goes through the state, but it would benefit the Yam Hill Carlton School District. So it's a dollar per square foot. So if you make an assumption that each home is around 2,000 square feet or so, then that's $162,000 that goes to the school district. Finally, there's this property taxes, which, which everybody knows about based on a, you know, a $425,000 property home value, then you can see that the property taxes that are, that are arrived at are around $361,000. This is per year. And then another thing that a lot of people may or may not know about is how this, how school districts get their funding. And this slide represents that. So based on, you know, again, a, a density that would be permitted in the R2 zone, you would see this kind of funding based upon students, new students going into the district. So around $677,000. So this is just a summary. This is kind of showing all the different fees and taxes and assessments that I just discussed. So it's, it's, it's quite a big number and, and, and all these benefit the city, the school district. And it's a big benefit to the city. This slide here shows the timeline that Mark spoke about on the bottom of, you can see the different years, but on the bottom there, it kind of lists the, the development process. You have a zone change. You have a subdivision application. You have subdivision improvements, meaning, you know, the kind of construction that was discussed. So, you know, your, your utilities, your, your streets and those kinds of things. And then when, when subdivision improvements are actually complete, the roads are done and all the utilities are, are in. And then you know, and that's basically when, after that is when homes start to be constructed. They can't be built before, obviously. So once that stuff is in and done and complete, then homes can be constructed. And then when you actually see the inputs on the system, somebody actually running, you know, a sink, somebody flushing a toilet, somebody driving a car, all those things are linked to occupancy. Not before. So you see that happening in, in 2025 roughly. And then on top of the, the years there, you see the different infrastructure things that, that Gordon was talking about, the Han Creek Pump Station improvements. So right now they just went to bid. So in 2022, the, you know, those improvements are, are slated to be complete. At that point, the wastewater treatment plant is, is going to go out to bid. The water transmission line improvements will be complete in 2022. And then you can see in 2023, the wastewater treat, treatment plant improvements are slated to be completely, these are all numbers discussed with city staff. And are they concrete? No, but they are, they're, they're in the ballpark. And so the point of this is really to show you that, that we're, we're in 2021 right now. And the, like I said, the inputs on the system aren't until projected to be until around 2025, at which point all these different things that, that, that Gordon spoke to, the improvements would be in place. So a number of different questions were asked. I think Mark Hoyt wanted to provide a brief summary and then I think it might be, I think there's questions for us. So we'd like to answer any questions there are at this time.
At this point, we've used our 20 minutes we wanted to use for our direct presentation. I just want to touch on the concept that this is a zone change, taking land that is committed to urbanization, reviewing it against the standards that apply to it and making a decision as to whether, whether this should be committed to small lot residential subdivisions or large lot residential subdivisions when the city has an abundant supply of large lot, but not an abundant supply of small lot. That's the question that's posed to the planning commission. With that in mind, we'd be happy to address any questions. And there's some specific information we'll provide regarding the traffic counts during rebuttal.
Want to say thank you to the applicant. I have our stop time as 7:57, having started at 7:36. So we have just under 10 minutes remaining. Our next step is to invite individuals who are in favor of the application beyond the applicant. If you, we have nobody here at City Hall. If anybody wishes to speak in favor of the application, I would invite them to raise their hand or remove themselves from you right now. And when I said applicant, this can be individuals, the owners, it could be Chad Davis Construction, any other individuals beyond those who had immediately mentioned themselves for the applicant. Not seeing any right now. If anybody has connectivity issues, please just bring it to our attention and we can revert back to you. I'd like to invite individuals who are opposed to the application. You'll have three minutes apiece, same request to you. Please raise your hand or otherwise bring yourself to our attention in the Zoom presentation. Not seeing any.
Can we, can I have a question? This is not for commissioners this moment, right? This is for people in the audience.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Commissioners will discuss and deliberate shortly. I'm not seeing anybody standing up or virtually raising their hand. So for now, we will proceed for any persons with neutral statements, neither for or against the project, but statements in general. Final call for either proposed, excuse me, proponents, opponents, or any neutral individuals who would like to give public testimony at this time regarding this application for zone change. Hearing none, I'll invite the applicant to continue with any further points that you'd like to hit prior to closing the public hearing. Final comments by staff, questions of staff by the commission and followed by deliberation.
Thank you. We had a couple of, our traffic engineer is here and we would ask him to address a few of the comments made regarding some of the traffic studies so that we can have that information clarified for the commission.
Sure. I'll jump in. My name's Todd Mobley, Lancaster Mobley. We've conducted the traffic impact study that's in the record. I did want to try to answer some of these specific questions that were raised during the staff report. We'll kind of just try to take these in order. Number one is when the counts were done, they were done in April of 2021, but actually the school was in session at the time of those counts. If you look closely at the traffic count volume, you can see a kind of pronounced school peak like you'd expect at those intersections of like third and Pulp. So there was school in session when the counts were done. We've made, there was, there was some talk about the pandemic and COVID and growth rates. We did actually make numerical adjustments, both for a COVID adjustment to factor the volumes up and also a separate growth rate to address regional growth on the system. So that was included in the analysis. There was this question specifically about the intersection of Pine and Cleveland and the crash data. We actually didn't analyze the intersection of Pine and Cleveland. There were six intersections that were analyzed. The nearest one to that was Pine and Pulp. So that's why I didn't see the crash data there. And then wanted to address to the pedestrian and bike needs near the school. So school was in session and we did count, there was pedestrian traffic, particularly like at third and Pulp near the school there. But again, this, this process is kind of looking toward the future. So what, what our analysis shows us with those various COVID adjustments and and school being in session is that roads of this size with traffic volumes in the, in the neighborhood that we expect when the site would develop can be accommodated by that level of infrastructure. Well, it's not to say at some point in the future, it'll be appropriate to mark a school crossing or do some kind of upgrade near the school. But again, those, that specificity will be handled at the time of the subdivision application. You know exactly what is proposed to go to go into the site and exactly what those traffic impacts would be. So that's an explanation of our analysis of third and Pulp. I did want to sort of hit on the importance of the street connectivity. This is an important site for the function of the overall transportation system because it does provide that connectivity. As the transportation system plan provides that connectivity north through J R Meadows 1 and 2 and some connectivity west out toward Pine really disperses those traffic impacts. So you don't end up with separate concentrated impacts. And this side as well as J R Meadows 1 and 2 would be newer projects that have modern street systems. They have sidewalks and they do have the bed and bike infrastructure and would provide that connectivity and serve a pretty good number of homes there that could actually walk and bike to the school and some of those things that are more difficult to do right now. So that, that kind of covers my notes of the things I wanted to address, but if there are specific questions still, I'm happy to address those.
I actually have specific questions. Is this an appropriate time to ask those?
Real quick, let's ask council, Mr. Peaslee, is, is appropriate for commissioners to ask questions directly to the applicant at this time? Is our procedure allowed for that?
If the applicant wishes to answer questions at this stage, they can. Otherwise counselors would ask the questions in the next period of the.
Okay, I can wait. It, it doesn't matter, but he just said if we have questions specific, so.
Understood. Well, we will close our public hearing at this time, assuming there is nothing else further from the applicant.
There is a couple of quick comments just to kind of wrap things up, summarize it and, and try to put a point on what is, what the proposal means in the grand scheme. This is just a zone change.
Mark, one thing I, I don't really have much to add, but I guess before you summarize real quick, one thing that was brought up that I, I didn't have a chance to really touch on in our presentation was, I think it was Commissioner Fernandez Madrid had a question about school, the school use of the school as a park and well, the city does have a pretty new parks development plan. It was adopted in 2020. And the Carlton Elementary School is, is part of that parks master plan. So it's, it's definitely, as far as we could tell, part of the city's goal to have that included as part of the park system. So it's, it's part of the, the mapping system and it's, it's called out as, as a, as a school park. So we just, I guess, wanted to make that clear. Thank you. Sorry.
No, that's a great clarification. Appreciate that. So this is just a zone change. No development of the property is proposed. This project requires infrastructure to develop in order for it to be constructed. But this is not about construction. This is about land committed to an urban use inside the urban growth boundary that needs to be designated in some other way. And when one looks at the zones available, R3 doesn't fit because there's not the kind of intensity of public development surrounding it to fit R3 in. R1 is already in substantial supply within the city of Carlton, leaving R2 as that appropriate zone. When one looks at what would flow from this is that once land is or the water flows, the public improvements are in place. The looping of the water system is going to enhance the school water flows and provide it fire flows it doesn't currently have. The street connectivity is something that's going to allow traffic to flow much more appropriately and freely through the city. Because people won't have to use the two primary north, south, east, west arterials in the city. They'll be able to go from their homes to pick up those arterials to go either out of the city or when coming back into the city without having to go through those major thoroughfares. It is true, there will be pressure on existing streets and the existing streets will see pressure from this development. But there will also be relief of pressure from this development by providing connectivity throughout the city. And, you know, I would urge you to consider carefully that map you saw that showed what the city's transportation plan. That's the plan that the city has adopted to manage its future progress and how it wants to handle traffic and how closely that plan aligns with and represents the streets that would be constructed as part of this property when construction could take place, which is years from now. Understandably, there is concern about development and building in Carlton. A lot has happened recently in a fairly small community. There's been substantial development. But this is not a project that's going to come online in the immediate future. This is a project that's going to come online down the road once development has paid for improvements. So when the commission looks at this, the question is, is posed is does this project represent the right or this proposal represent the right characterization of the zoning of this property that has been committed to an urban use given the circumstances. And when one steps back and looks at that narrow question, which is the question before the commission, I believe that when you look at the zoning and what it's designed to apply to, R2 is the appropriate zone and specific questions about constructability, density and those things can be addressed when applications come back and are presented to the commission. So if that's triggered some questions, we'd be happy to answer those within our time remaining. Otherwise, we will turn this over to the commissioners and the, any member of the applicant's team is available to answer questions before the public hearing is closed.
Thank you very, very much. At this point, we will close the public hearing. Comments from the public and the applicant will now be closed and we will proceed with final comments by staff and then questions from the commissioners. Jenkins.
Thank you, Chair Stewart. And I appreciate all the questions from the planning commission and the presentation from the applicant as well. I just want to emphasize that again, this is a zone change. So the criteria that need to be addressed in making findings, whether in support or denial of the application must be specific to those found in the zone change section of the Carlton Development Code. Those need to be referenced in any findings that are made again for or against and, and the specific provisions that are either met or not met when those findings are made. But other than that, I have nothing else to add. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jenkins. At this time, since we've gone just over two hours, we'll take just a brief five minute recess starting now at 8:10. We'll return at 8:15 to allow any individuals or the applicant to have just a moment of break. We will return in five minutes. Thank you very much. All right, we're back. Thanks, everybody for the patience. Every once in a while, it's good to take a little five minute break. I think we're going to get into some very thought provoking discussion here and our first step will be going commissioner by commissioner. As always, I like to go through the alphabet. And so we will start with Commissioner Bandy with any questions that you might have for staff or you know, any, any points you'd like to bring up in addition to those that you mentioned earlier, sir. Mr. Bandy, I'm going to move on to Commissioner Fernandez Madrid. In the event that you're able to join us here, we will revisit your comments. Mr. Fernandez Madrid, I'd invite any questions you have at this time.
A quick question to Mr. Mobley regarding the traffic study. On page 138, which is Pine Street at Polk Street. The data is from January of 2014 to the end of 2018. There is no crash data on that page. Do you have anything to support that?
Is this, sorry, I'm a
Page 138.
Let me see if I can. Paging him right in the packet just doesn't line up with my document.
Yeah, that I mean, as you're searching to locate that, I do want to clarify because it came up. Uh with Mark two and his comments about adding crosswalks, that is a crosswalk and that's precisely my concerns. It's a crosswalk that crosses Highway forty seven. Onto the main feeder route, the four blocks in that goes to the grade school. And according to your traffic study on peak flows. And again, not to be disrespectful, sir, but there there were not students in school in April of this year. Um there was core staff and that was it. But you had approximately during the AM peak flow, according to your diagram here, a hundred left turns from the southbound traffic. Going left onto that street. And if you've got a hundred every morning, I can't believe that for a four year period, there wasn't a single crash at that intersection.
Well, let me answer those individually. So the crash data, you said it was page one thirty eight of your packet. Is that right? Yeah, so what that shows us is there was no crashes recorded at Pine and Polk. In that period, the five year period of twenty fourteen to twenty eighteen.
And and this information was supported by by what? ODOT?
That's yeah, it's ODOT's database. They maintain that those records.
So not using any local law enforcement.
Well, there's protocols for law enforcement to file reports that go to ODOT. That's why the. That's why the delay in chronology, that's why we don't have like twenty twenty daddy, just because of that process it takes to.
Sure. I mean, I I have. What uh what made me question it is that I have personal knowledge of a bicycle, a student crossing. In the crosswalk being hit during that timeframe. So I just and I don't see it reflected there. So that was cause for concern. And it is a marked crosswalk. There is not a signal. But the other levels that I mentioned, ENF um are my main concerns that if there were added. Uh traffic usage. That that would contribute to the hazard as well as the amount of traffic. That's the the other question. Well. Actually, there's there's one more question and I don't know if it's a question so much as a comment because there were multiple um. Statements that um the criteria of less than two thousand cars, according to that one acronym AA. HAM, whatever it is, is considered low. Well, the entire population of the town's only two thousand. So to say it's considered low. It's irrelevant because the population of the town is two thousand and I don't think any intersection. Has the entire population of the town passing through it on any given day. And I think it was the wrong matrix to use for a town of this size.
Yeah, that just comes from industry or traffic engineering practice about. Traffic volumes that streets are intended to carry, so.
I understand. It just isn't applicable to a town of the size.
And you're, I'm sorry, your other question about the, I think it was a hundred left turns. Can you point me to a a figure or a page number for that?
Let me get the diagram. This. My yellow highlighter has faded, sorry. Here we go. Is this matrix here on your page sixty nine? And that's that's shown right here.
Sixty nine. Think of page numbering goes up that high. Do you have the page number from the packet? I could probably find it that way.
And this is what's going in the corner. And actually on page seventy. Cause the page sixty nine is the twenty twenty one existing and page seventy is the twenty thirty five planned.
Yep, I'm with you. So is it? Was your question about it in a specific intersection? Sorry, can you?
Yeah, well, that same intersection. I mean, I just basically stuck to that one intersection because I have personal experience living very close by. Um and I, you know, can see the. Parents driving the kids and that is where most of the school buses turn just to to familiarize yourself with you when you talk about cutting through the neighborhoods and whatnot. School buses come from all the outside out, you know, outline rural areas as well as two collection points within the downtown area. They come south on Pine Street, which is Highway forty seven. They make that left turn on to Polk. And they travel the four blocks to the elementary school. They have recently, last couple of years redesigned the school. So that they bought a property next door to move some of the teacher parking offsite next to the school. The buses then come in, discharge the students, pull out, and then they head north on Third Street up until Main Street. And that's to facilitate that traffic flow. But um. Having, you know, put kids through that school and also living in that neighborhood, there's already at both of those intersections, Third and Main, but also I'm sticking with with Pine and. Polk there. It just, there there's there's backup, which which your figures certainly tapped on. But the other thing that was interesting about those pages, sixty nine and seventy is that. When you looked at the volumes, it was only, I want to say, two percent. Over an almost fifteen year period, which if you're going to in, you know, in uh increase the population of the town. You know, approximately six hundred people. I I I just don't see where those figures add up.
Well, with regard to the southbound volume there, the existing count showed in the morning, peak hour, there were seventy six left turns. So yeah, we. We found that by, that's on page sixty nine, and then on page seventy, we found that by Planning Horizon twenty thirty one. Um that volume increased to a hundred. So that's that's why the increase and that's why that's a hundred. So.
Right.
Anyway, that's what that's what that volume reflects.
Right. But do you, do you stand by those numbers in a in a fifty, you know, and I understand it's projected. But if all of these projects go through, even at the low ball figure of two point five eight people per per residence. Um. By only increasing those counts. I mean, when I'm looking at those AM numbers on the southbound, you've got two hundred and fifty nine cars traveling south. You've got two hundred and thirty one traveling north, so. Roughly in the neighborhood of five hundred cars in a two hour period, you know, passing each other along that road. You're only bumping that up by twenty two vehicles fifteen years later. So that just doesn't seem right. Plus, um you know, we do have a truck bypass going to happen here. And I know there was a big hoo-ha on that because I was part of the streets committee with that. Saying that, oh, it's going to increase our truck volume. We don't know if it will, but that will continue to be the thoroughfare for the truck traffic in and out of Carlton. Um and I just, I can't believe that in a fifteen year period, it's only going to be bumped up by twenty two cars. Um it just doesn't seem very realistic to me.
So the the volume adjustments are explained on page sixty six of the packet and it gets. Pretty complicated, but we followed the analysis procedures. ODOT. Um publishes an analysis procedures manual that has all the detail on on how this adjustment factor. Done that consistent with that practice in addition to the COVID adjustments. So um. Yes, we're confident that that those. Those math was done correctly and those results are are valid.
I'm familiar with it, but um I'm gonna hang on to my reservations, but thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Graham.
Uh my concern was about the fact that I thought it was going to be developed ver- fairly soon. I see now it's not going to be available. Probably till twenty two or twenty three because of the pump station and other. Developments and at that time, if we prove the zone change, we will deal with the traffic areas and the. The other things is make sure they have the services available. But right now, I think, yeah, I I support it. Uh changing from agriculture, if I own the land, I would want to sell it. And I would make it uh R two sounds very reasonable. That's it.
Commissioner Nordstrom, any questions at time for staff or for the applicant?
Um. I don't, I don't think so. Um. Uh yeah, this is just questions, right? I don't think I have any further questions.
Understood. Thank you. Commissioner Terrell, any further questions for staff or the applicant?
Um, well, I guess I do. Um in their presentation um just now. They um mentioned many of the upgrades that are going to be financed by the Systems Development Code. And how these streets that they will potentially build will be um. Supported with pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure. And I guess this is just more of a comment and it it's not going to influence my decision to. Vote um for the zone change, but um they keep talking about these upgrades and yet. The seventh street that this same team has built um in JR Meadows has um. Sidewalks that don't conform to our code. They're five feet instead of six feet on the collector's street. Um there's no identifiable bike lanes that they they're promising in this new. Um potentially in this new subdivision. Um and it just, it gives me. It 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 just, I want them to understand that these are things that are important to our community and um. I don't want to be disappointed again with um the development if and when it occurs. Um so I just think that's important for them to understand the level of disappointment for our community. And then I also want them to be very aware that um. That the present infrastructure for pedestrians and bicycles doesn't support adding more people right now. The existing. The existing infrastructure doesn't re- doesn't support that. And I understand that system development charges will help with that, but um. You know, at the same time, it's helping with it. It's adding more people. So it's adding more pressure on the existing systems. So I just, I just have that in my mind and I just want them to understand and be aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Terrell. I'd like to revisit one more time for Commissioner Bandi, uh who I know is appearing by phone this evening. Sir, if you have any uh questions for staff or the applicant at this time, that is, this is the time for that. Hearing none, uh I will ask just a couple of questions that I have collected here. Um I looked at the uh topographic map with respect to the uh thinking about the long term stormwater. Um management in on this and I had realized this isn't a subdivision. But it looks as if the the water is moving, would move naturally from the southwest to the northeast corner. And from a general perspective, from from staff's perspective and the city engineer's perspective, would that be coherent and compliant with the existing plans? Uh that are prepared for JR Meadows. Um I believe it's uh number two right there at Cleveland and Wilson.
I can talk to that. This is Gordon. Uh the JR Meadows subdivision was designed uh with the flows upstream. Coming down to it, so the pipes are all sized appropriately. And the flow generally does flow towards. Uh the JR Meadows two subdivision. Uh so in concept, yes, it it all appears that it can work. Uh of course, this would have to be reviewed when any subdivision came in. For review.
Thank you, sir. Just wanted to make sure that came to mind. Secondarily, this question, I think, but would be for Kyle. Um we mentioned the elementary school and I think it was remarked that it was part of the city's published parks plan. Um do you know that if the the park is available for public use after hours, I can imagine during school hours for safety and other reasons. So it might be limited, but is is public access permitted onto the, it's called the grassy areas or the park areas of the school?
I do know it is included. That might be a better question for Amy, though. Um. Amy, or do you know, do you know what the hours are on the public park, on the park?
Uh the public park is not at the school, is not available during school hours, obviously. Um I would have to double check with the school district. They do have, in the past, they have had it available. Um. After hours and weekends, um but they have added some fencing for security. So I would have to check with them since that's been developed.
Okay. Um those are my only two questions right now. I don't have any questions for the applicant. Um we have, as as I indicated, we have closed the public hearing and so now we will commence the discussion by the commission. We'll. Circle back up. Um I'm going to presume that Mister Bandi is still unavailable. If he would like to make comment or add to the discussion, please just let us know. Raise your hand or um speak up and we will return to. Oh, is that him? There he is, sir.
Yes, I am here, sorry. It's uh it's very difficult for me to get into this thing that. It's a long story, but anyway. Um my concerns are much the same as far as. Um the other commissioners with the traffic flow and bicycle lanes and all of that. Uh those are not things to be taken lightly because we are talking about our our children and grandchildren. And we need to be aware of how every single motion, every single act we take. Winds up impacting their future and their potential at having a future. My biggest complaint. Centers on the potential hazard of Pine and Polk and Third and Polk. And Third Street in general and how the traffic flow. Although you keep they keep telling us it's going to make everything smoother, it it that does not make sense. People are not going to drop their kids up at school and drive back into that development. They're going to drive to Main Street and kids walk up Main Street to get to school. Bicycle up Main Street to get to school and those lanes don't exist. So those are my concerns and and that's really all I have. I've asked what I. Kyle, what I've asked and and we will, we will just uh see how the commission wants to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um we'll proceed for Commissioner Fernandez Madrid. If you have any additional comments or. Uh input that you'd like to have as part of our discussion at this time.
Quick question. Um and this would be Kyle. Uh regarding criteria B, does the change of zone in conformance with the comprehensive plan Carlton Development Code, et cetera, et cetera. Um street and highway plans. Since the city manager, just per our request, put an RFP out for. The comprehensive plan to be reviewed and updated and the other articles that we mentioned there. Um. What while this is under review, I have to say it's very difficult to be sitting in our chair. Um trying to make as a layperson an informed decision, having done quite a bit of homework. Um knowing that that Carlton Development Code is under review. And being asked to move on something that could be impacted by that. So. It's not a question so much as, I guess, Kyle, I'm asking for guidance because while we know. That that is under review, how does that impact our decision making this evening?
Sure. So I mean, I I I can answer that in the sense that um, you know, comprehensive plan. We want to, when an applicant, when a land use application is submitted, there's a certain time, you know, with any application where, you know, you have to review it. In this case, it's a hundred and twenty days. So comprehensive plans are always changing. The codes are always changing as they should. And I think it's. Uh a huge positive that the city is embarking on this uh comprehensive plan amendment and development code update. Uh so from that sense, um you know, you're required. To address the criteria that are present in the existing comprehensive plan, the existing development code. What I'll mention is. If there was a change to the development code in the future, then any potential subdivision would be subject to any of those changes. Um so that's just something to keep in mind as well, um because I know there is that thing going on, but as far as this application and. Um the obligation is to. the obligation is to respond to the policies based on the criteria in the existing development code and comprehensive plan.
Okay, so in existing, but it would not be retroactive.
Correct. What do you mean by retroactive?
If there were certain things in this presentation, this 172 pages, that were found to be not at some, hopefully not three year, but hopefully that RFP doesn't take that long. With that comprehensive plan review being completed, if there was something in this application that was impacted, this is just a hypothetical ask, would it be retroactive to this packet?
No, it would not. If you were to approve or deny the zone change, it would not have a, future updates would have no impact on on this application. Could have an impact on future subdivision or site design review applications, but it would not have an impact on.
If I could piggyback on that as well, the.
That's pretty much what I thought. Thank you.
Mr. Beasley, I'd invite you to finish that statement. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, so the the RFP update of the comprehensive plan, the development code is prospective and will take some time to actually manifest, become a full update of the comprehensive plan or the development code. And in most cases, the actual changes to the comprehensive plan or the development code won't have legal merit until they are passed by the city council. So in this instance, if we're asking, should we judge a zone change application based on potential change in the comprehensive plan or the development code in the future? The answer is, for all intents and purposes, ignore the change to the RFP that's coming along. Because you judge this application by the standards that exist at the time it's filed. Because for for all we know, when the RFP happens, it could be that the city council adopts the exact same comprehensive plan you currently have. That likely won't happen, but that's the thing that we, if we look prospectively at the potential of what this plan could be, we effectively have to stop all potential motion or all decisions by anyone involving a development code or a comprehensive plan for upwards of a half a year or more. And and that's simply not how these these decisions are made.
Thank you, Mr. Beasley. Next, if there's any further comment from or discussion from Commissioner Graham?
I'm fine.
None from Commissioner Graham. Commissioner Nordstrom, I know that you had some comments or discussion you'd like to add.
Um, yeah, I I appreciate the presentation of, you know, from the developer and AKS. My, my real concern, and I, and I do think this fits into what we've been given, and if I'm wrong about that, I would really like to know. I mean, I do want to do my job here. So my understanding of kind of this, the big picture that we're trying to take on to this is that we have a piece of property that's agricultural holding, which basically means for future development, when appropriate, this can be converted to residential. And that that's kind of the idea in how that exists in the city's urban growth boundary. Do I have that right? Like this, right now it's agricultural. It's sort of slated to eventually, when appropriate, be converted to development.
Yes, I just, real fast, so I know it's, it's, it can be a little confusing because it's called agricultural, but it's within the urban growth boundary. So the clarification there is that while the zoning is agricultural holding, it's within the city's existing urban growth boundary, which means it is designated for urban use when that time is appropriate.
Right. Yeah. So the, when the time is appropriate, I think, is where, where I'm landing at the moment. Not that I, I think it's inappropriate that at some point that gets developed. And I do appreciate the positive impacts that that will bring. I think if this got developed immediately, it is not going to bring positive impacts because the structures don't exist. And that those structures may take a little while. And it's not, I think, just the compensation. I think it's the roads, the streets, the, you know, there's a lot, a lot of other infrastructure that I think the city needs to support this kind of growth. You know, with three really big developments, there's infrastructure in the city that needs to support those. It's not, I think it's not just water, not just. You know, we didn't even really talk about the schools that, because that wasn't really relevant. And so I, I won't talk about this. But um, I, I, so I guess for me, if if I was confident about the timeline, I could, I could, I could think about supporting this. And I know that this may not even be my choice to consider the timeline. So I, I, I guess I do want some guidance on that, too. But I do think, you know, this is the same developer that has developed two other large properties. And I, you know, I, I do think their history is important here. And that, you know, even looking at the timeline, right, it was basically like the minute, I, I got the sense the minute this zone change happens, they submit some plans. Now it might be a while before that's built.
So that's not entirely, first of all, I, I do understand the concerns with, with you know, being told one thing and having another thing happen. You know, from my perspective as staff, and I think I probably speak on behalf of Gordon and Amy and everyone else, you know, we take it very seriously to review the development code and and make sure that all those, those elements of the code are being addressed, including sidewalks. You know, streets, anything like that. So that's just from, from my perspective. But the timeline, I think you're referring to, again, this is a zone change. So the zone change only rezones the land. They cannot come in with a subdivision application until those improvements are complete. So those, the sewer system improvements, any necessary capacity improvements, anything like that. They cannot gain approval on a subdivision application and start any kind of grading or drainage or any kind of improvements on that property until a subdivision application is approved. So I believe, you know, obviously, you know, they, the applicant presented a timeline. I don't remember exactly what the, but roughly, you know, they indicated that, that based on the conversations that they've had with, with the city regarding these improvements, their intent, they can't physically start these improvements until there's sufficient infrastructure to do so. So you know, that's about the extent of, of, other than the recommendation, the staff report, I can't, you know, say provide a whole lot more guidance. But in terms of, you know, from, from staff's perspective, this would not be something that we would be recommending approval on if it was going to result in immediate construction without adequate capacity.
Yeah, I just, I was, I was really concerned about sort of the continued emphasis on or concurrently. And I really think that the infrastructure needs to be in place first. And and so I guess that's, but I'm, I'm concerned that we, that we approve this, this change of zoning. And that this is the moment at which we can say, this isn't the need right now. This isn't the, like, that we've got a whole bunch of houses going in that haven't even been built yet. Like, there isn't a need for another development yet. And so I guess I'm, I, I do feel like we have a moment here where in terms of planning commission's sense of the future planning and, and zone changes, it's not just, does this, and maybe I'm wrong, maybe it's just, does this piece of property fit this zone change? And then that's, that's it. And that's all we have say on. Or does it, or is there a sense of like, we approve a zone change when we feel that zone change is an appropriate next step right now? Does that make sense?
Sure. And then really, it's, it's up to you to, and the planning commission, to interpret the approval criteria for a zone change. You know, again, staff have given our thoughts on the matter and findings in the staff report. But if the planning commission disagrees with that, those, those assessments in the, in the evidence presented by the applicant, you know, you have the right to, to disagree. That is not something that you don't have the right to do, obviously. If you disagree with those, those statements, that is, you know, you just need to make the proper findings indicating what criteria specifically are not met by the proposal. Again, it's the opinion of staff that these criteria are met, but that's just, you know, what's presented in the staff report.
Okay, I think, yeah, I, I think, um, yeah, I thi- I think I understand that. And I, and I, and I guess, I guess just my comment is that I am not convinced of the need to change, I, I think it was whether there's enough other kind of zone stuff in the area at the moment. Because I feel like I don't, I don't even know, I don't even know whether, I mean, I, I guess I can assume all those properties are going to sell once they're built in JR two. But I also, I, I also worry a little bit that our, our population predictions were based, I think, on a study from 2007, which was, in fact, before we had the first house, that big housing crash. And like, in 2009, there was tons of vacant properties in Carlton. And I realize that's not where we are now, but I don't feel like, I mean, I do kind of feel like that's a sort of outdated study in terms of what we are going to need now. And I, and I, I could imagine that in a year, two years, three years, we say, yeah, okay, we're ready. But I also do feel like with all the building happening in Carlton, all the building happening in Yamhill, that I don't, I don't know, I don't know that we have a need for 80 more houses right now. I don't know. And I guess that's where I'm struggling with this decision, is I, I don't know if we fit that criterion right now.
Then just lastly, again, I just want to emphasize again, this is not permitting any kind of development. This, this is not even a subdivision. There's no lots being created as part of this. This is just opening the door for a potential application in the future. And again, that application cannot come in until all infrastructure needs have been met. So as far as someone being able to sneak an application in without those needs being met, that's not something that will happen. Because that would not be, an application would not be able to meet the applicable approval criteria of a subdivision or for a subdivision, should that, should that happen. So again, this is just changing the designation of the land.
Yeah, I, I do appreciate that. And I know I've asked you to repeat that like five or six times tonight.
Understood.
But I, I, I think I want to be really clear about the infrastructure needs to exist before the next step. And I, because I think that's really all of our concern, is the infrastructure. We don't feel like the infrastructure exists. And we're worried about the, like, we make this approval and we have lost control over that existing. And you're, you keep reassuring us, we have control over that existing. So I appreciate that. So thank you for repeating yourself several times to me.
Right. And this is the infrastructure that, that is, you know, as, there's not certain, you know, there, there's some opinions that may differ from, from, you know, certain standards. Those are not always the same. So there, as far as the standards go, we can assure you that the standards will have to be met. That doesn't necessarily mean that you all will not have opinions, that there is not sufficient, you know, for instance, transportation infrastructure, but that's not, you know, those are two different things. So I just want to make that clear as well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Terrell?
Okay, um, so are you still on the line?
Yes.
Okay, great. Hey, Gordon, I want to know, um, can you see a way to upgrade the pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure on Third Street? Is that even possible?
Yes.
Given the width.
I mean, it, it, it occurred, there was a development of two blocks
Right.
on Third Street that widened the street and provided sidewalk on one block, sidewalk coming when the next block is developed, it's was slated to be a church. And that hasn't come in yet. So there is space in the right away and there is the ability to improve certainly the sidewalks and the street width.
Okay. And so there would be room for, because it's a collector's street, am I correct?
It's called a school zone, collector's street.
Yeah, and it's a safe route.
Yeah, it's a little bit different than a regular collector's street.
But so it should, by ordinance, it should include bicycle infrastructure and adequate sidewalks on both sides. Am I correct?
Yeah, it, it should have sidewalks. It's a, a fairly well-developed area, meaning there's not a lot of empty lots. So some of that future development would likely have to be a city project.
Okay. And so, um, and so that could be, so that could be possible if the city put their mind and their finances behind that. They could decide, well, we really are going to dedicate money to this and have this infrastructure in place before any development occurs in another. And I know the developer would not be in charge of paying for that infrastructure, because that's existing infrastructure. And they're really only in charge of what they build. But um, that is something that the city, like, we as a planning commission could ask for that as a priority. And that could be achieved. I mean, I just, I don't even know a third street. I, that's, I guess my question was two parts. Could Third Street be turned into a street that really functions as a safe route to school? Which it doesn't right now. It really truly does not. And so like currently, it's, it's not enough infrastructure to support any more traffic in that area safely. But could it be converted to that? And your answer is?
It can be upgraded.
Okay, and it could be a safe pedestrian infrastructure?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Terrell. That leaves me on the final hot seat for the evening. Just a quick question for council. From a procedural perspective, we've got three options. We have to make an approval recommendation and a disapproval recommendation or a continuance. And I see that it's for a date certain or indefinitely. For that third option, can you clarify indefinitely how that procedure works? And then I'll, I'll proceed with my comment.
There is a timeline inherent in the actual zone change procedure. So indefinitely would be a time less than the maximum timeline present in the zone change procedures. In theory, the commission could postpone their decision to the end of that period and do a pocket veto of some sort. Effectively, that would just be going a roundabout way of saying that you deny the application, which at this point are preferences, counsel for the city, would be that you would simply make an open statement of denying it. If you are looking for an uncertain date to start this, or to delay this or continue this to, it would have to be sometime within that timeline that also provides the city council enough time to make a final decision before the end of this, this time period. Wrong, Kyle, I believe it's.
Yes. So I, I want to clarify a few things here. So first of all, there, the timeline for a zone, for land use decisions are, is 120 days. So in this case, the 120 day, and this is state law, so 120 day expiration is October 28th. And that is by the time city council must make their decision. So in order to extend that, the city would have to work with the applicant. The applicant would have to agree to an extension of that date. Secondly, you are making a recommendation to city council. You are not denying or approving the application. So no, regardless of, of what your recommendation is, this still goes to the city council for their ultimate approval or denial. So those are the two things I would make clear. I would agree with Nicholas that I don't really see any reason for, you know, you, you have the evidence in front of you, that evidence is not going to change. So I would, I would recommend making a recommendation of either support or denial of the application tonight.
We would also note that the recommendation should be factually based and have an explanation of the reasons for that approval or denial.
Understood. I'll give you a little bit of clarity on what I was thinking, because I see that there's a lot of initiative and a lot of effort having been put into this application. The applicant, the owners, the engineers and everybody behind this are thinking, not next year, not the year after, but four, five and more years down the road. And I think part of our job as a planning commission is to think in the context of the now and the future. And I think part of our job as a planning commission is to think in the context of the now and the future. Um, if the applicant, I understand they would need to come to an agreement, but we've, we've discussed that there is a possibility in the next roughly six months or so, that the city council will be given an opportunity to revisit and review not just R two but the broader comprehensive plan and the development plan, excuse me, the development code. Um, and so it might be beneficial for all of the parties, the city, the commission, the council and everybody, um, uh, excuse me, and the applicant. Uh, to agree to a mutual uh extension or um essentially an indefinite continuance to a, a date certain by agreement into the new year. To provide a little bit of opportunity there, because I think a lot of good thoughtful work has gone into that. Um, it sounds like based upon the discussions that we've had, we have a lot of pushback based upon the shortcomings of our own code and perhaps over the next three to six months, we would be in a position where um, it would be much more of an informed decision for a, a recommendation of, of any kind to the council. If we were to have more solidity uh on what the, the comprehensive plan and the development code might look like or do look like into the future. I realize that there's a lot of dependency, uh contingencies that need to occur there, but uh I don't think we need to limit ourselves to non-creative thinking. With, with that said, the biggest point for me is the nature of the R two twenty five, or excuse me, the city's goal for a twenty-five seventy-five multifamily versus single-family breakdown. And the shortcomings of the specific zone to, to really give some guidance to developers, um, that to me is one of the um ways that we can adjust and update the development code to, to allow these decisions to be a lot more clearer for the planning commission or the city council in reviewing our efforts. Um, so that's just a broad point here that i- if there is an opportunity in the applicant, we're agree with the city for an extension, that might give a little bit of breathing room for an otherwise laudable, long-term effort to uh take an, a property that was designed to be urbanized and put it on the path to long-term urbanization. I think staff has been very clear here that zero development will occur without the requisite infrastructure as required under the current code. And is, will, will be required as of the time of the application for that future subdivision, and so. Um, I don't have as big of a fear, and I, I am sure that in the future, when this is revisited for a subdivision application, it will be a lively debate. Uh, but for the purposes of a zone change, in thinking about our broader effort of what is in the future. Um, I, I think that the applicant has provided sufficient information for us to make a finding of approval. Now, others may disagree there, but the language here is shall approve if sufficient, or excuse me, the language is. Um, shall be approved if the applicant provides evidence substantiating, substantiating the following, and then it lists the necessary criteria. Um, I think they've provided evidence and staff has, um, has, has agreed and provided the staff recommendation in conformance with that, so I would tend to be on the permissive side if only for looking down the long-term future. If we're gonna always hobble ourselves thinking about five to ten years in the future at the uh expense of the conjectured present, I, I don't know if it worth meeting the entirety of our obligations to the citizens. Um, so with that said, uh, that's kind of my point here, um, I think unless there's any other comments by the commissioners, I think we can start a roll call tally and get an idea. Um, uh, or at least an individual one-on-one perspective, whether each commissioner would like to move for a recommendation of approval. A recommendation or disapproval, or some form of a recommendation for a continuance.
So start with Commissioner. Real quick, can I, can I, and Nicholas, please, uh, let me know if I'm misstating, but um I think that an important part of, of local planning is, is that the nature of, of codes as changing and comprehensive plans as changing. Um, and I completely understand the, the desire to, um, you know, make these changes prior to a land use application, making a judgment on a land use application, but one of the reasons why this hundred and twenty day rule is in place. Um, is so the applicant can, you know, have a decision made on an application under the existing approval criteria um that are currently in the code. Um, I also again want to emphasize that this project, you know, this future project, there's no timeline on it quite yet. This is gonna likely be a year or more, it's a, it's a large-scale project, um, that the city has not even selected a consultant for. Um, it's going to do a lot of, of beneficial things for the city, um, and including changes to the development code. Uh, and applicable standards, um, but I would, just from a staff perspective, I would uh caution against. Um, you know, and there's also a limit to, to, you know, how, how long an application can be extended, so that, that would be my recommendation here, but lastly, again, a subdivision application, if it was to come in after these code amendments were made, that's, that, that future application would be subject to any code changes that had been passed by the city council and adopted by, into the development code. So those are the two points I want to make, Nicholas, let me know if you have anything to add.
Yeah, sort of in the abstract, the way to think about zone changing is you're, you're modifying the rules of the game of what can be done. In this instance, this property is zoned agricultural holding. If it is not changed from agricultural holding, it cannot be developed in the ways that have been proposed. Uh, if it ever gets rezoned as agriculture, away from agricultural holding into R two or some sort of residential housing. Then at a later date, some developer, uh, potentially the applicant, potentially a different developer, could then make it something into the future, so uh the question isn't necessarily what is the prospective, the, the conceptual development plan, the question is, does the city require or have need for uh this sort of a zone change, looking into the future uh for, for what would be needed in the, the near term slash mid near term. Uh, the comprehensive plan change, uh, based on the timeline we wrote into the actual RFP should be done in December or later of twenty twenty-two, so the expectation is you wouldn't actually have an adopted change to your comprehensive plan, your development code until potentially twenty twenty-three. Uh, that would be likely well outside the range of how far we could extend this sort of a decision, so I, I would echo Kyle on this and say, uh, the preference would be uh, a recommendation of approval for reasons or a recommendation of denial for reasons rather than continues.
We should appreciate the clarification and the education. So at this point, uh, we'll proceed with kind of a, a roll call approach or just kind of go through if anybody has any final comments. And then we'll make a call for any motions, any of the commissioners have any final comments or points that you'd like to add? Uh, start with Commissioner Bande.
No, I have nothing else to add at the moment.
Thank you, sir, Commissioner Fernandez Madrid.
Um, I just want to thank everybody for the work and the thoughtful presentation tonight. Um, Mr. Stewart, that was very eloquent and uh it was a nice try, and I also appreciate Nicholas with his clear-eyed legal opinion that even putting this out for RFP, it probably won't be in effect until twenty twenty-three. Which sadly is not what I wanted to hear, cause when the city council took this on themselves last, it took them three years. So maybe, uh, maybe we can sort of professionally rattle their cage a little bit to move things along. That's pretty much it, I, um, I, I think I'm satisfied in, in the criteria. I, oh, and I also want to thank legal counsel for giving us that uh five-page document about tips to arrive at your, um at your decision, I mean, that was made clear to us verbally last time, but having that written document was certainly helpful, so thank you for that. Um, so yeah, again, just thank you to everybody for all your concern and I think, uh you know, we can move on this tonight, but that's all I have.
Um, uh, Commissioner Graham does not have any further comment at this time, Commissioner Nordstrom or Terrell, uh, any further comments?
I just want to thank everybody for um allowing such a productive discussion. So I appreciate everybody's thoughtful questions, comments, responses, um, so, thank you.
Excellent, and I see as Ms. Terrell is shaking her head, no further comment.
No.
All right.
Thank you, thank you.
At this time, I will invite um motions, uh, at the bottom of page twenty-one in our packet. Uh, is an outline of your options here, you can move to recommend that the city council approve, move to recommend the city council deny. Uh, or there is the option to continue, but as we've discussed, doesn't appear that that's uh the best option to take at this time, so. I'd invite any motions, but just a reminder, uh, that we need to have some findings in here supportive of the positions. And uh, I'll open the floor.
Well, I'll, I'll move that we approve it, uh, the zone change from agricultural holding to R two.
And based upon the findings that it is complied with.
Based on the findings, it, it complies with the criteria for approval. And in our uh zone change, in our municipal code, it says criteria for approval. A, a proposed zone is appropriate for the comprehensive plan use. Destination on the property is consistent with description and policies for application of comprehensive land plan use classification. B, the use is permitted in the proposed, proposed zone can be accommodated by proposed site without exceeding physical capability. C, allows use of pers- proposed zone may be established in compliance with the development development requirements in this title. And D, adequate public facilities, services and transportation networks are in place or are planned to be provided concurrently with the development of the property. In this case, this couldn't occur until about twenty twenty-two, that's my understanding. That's, that's it, sorry, the last part I threw in.
Do I have a second from anybody? Mr. Peaslee for, oh, sorry, go ahead, Jennifer.
I, I will second.
Excellent, with a second, I'll call for a vote, uh, we'll proceed through alphabetically, I'll have Amy call.
That's why I clarify again, this is a recommendation of approval, uh, not an approval.
That's correct.
Commissioner Bande, how do you vote?
I.
Commissioner Graham, how do you vote?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Nordstrom, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez Madrid, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Terrell, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Chair Stewart, how do you vote?
Oh, yes.
There's four, five yes when no motion passes.
All right, this will be formally recommended to the city council, want to thank everybody, all the commissioners. Um, the applicant and the team that have been participating this evening, as well as a number of our city citizens that have joined us tonight. Your involvement, participation is very much appreciated. With that, um, we have finished the prepared agenda for this evening. Um, we can have any commissioner comments or new business uh to be brought up of any topic at this time. Mr. Bande, do you have any contributions or any new business you'd like to discuss this evening, sir?
No.
Mr. Fernandez Madrid.
I'd just like to make a request that we are kept in the loop uh from the city council about the RFP, where that stands, how that stands and how it, how it progresses. Be very interested in that, so that would be the development code, the comprehensive plan and uh discussion on urban growth boundary, thank you.
And you all will be heavily involved in that, in that process, just to be, as the planning commission, you will be the, the primary, I would say, the, the body, I mean, working on that project, so just want to make that clear.
We gotta fix your zoo.
What's that?
I said, if you, if you don't hear about it from all of us, we gotta fix your zoo. It'll be coming up.
Yeah, well, it's been, we've been having, we've been having trouble with connectivity. So, yeah, I, I, I just wanted to make that request because last city council meeting, uh Chair Ward Mullen said that, um that it was confusing who would actually be working on those codes, and she said, oh, planning's got that, and I thought, well, didn't we make the recommendation or the request in the letter um to the city manager to, to go ahead and, and put that out? And then there's a consulting firm hired, so I wasn't sure what our degree of involvement would be, so thank you for that clarification.
If, if I could add some to that, uh, the way that the RFP is written at present is it's heavily in, uh, based on, on the original comprehensive plan ideas. Then one of that is that the planning commission is the citizen engagement commission or committee. Uh, so it, part of the RFP highly focuses on actually involving the community and in coming up with the, the terms and changes and, and modifications or requested uh modifications for the comprehensive plan and my development code. And the planning commission is in theory the point man for the entire city as the citizen engagement committee. Uh, on top of that, it is worth noting that the, the RFP that we sent out is specifically for a change to the comprehensive plan with the potential for additional changes development code, in theory, because of the way we've set up scoring system. Uh, applicants who suggest changes to the development and the comprehensive plan will score better in their initial evaluations and more likely will then become uh the, the finalist in, in that decision, but it is possible that you could have applicants that merely update comprehensive plan and the development code remain untouched unless a further uh decision was made.
Sure, and I, I've got a helicopter flying over, so I'm not sure if you can hear me too well right now, but um, I just really appreciated all the guidance that we got tonight and having the people who have those departments within the city chiming in to, um, to help guide us, because we, we do depend on their expertise, so thanks again for all of that. Um, the other thing too is to the city manager, we've not met, but I really appreciate uh how quickly you jumped on getting that RFP out, because we had some significant frustration in planning uh looking at unprecedented things within the code that we're being asked to rule on and a lot of sleepless nights and nervousness, so thank you to Shannon Beauclaire for putting that out as quickly as you did, thank you.
And I'd like to thank everyone too, you did a hell of a job.
And every, every time I looked at that concrete, it was like di- different dates, and it might not get due, done until twenty twenty-three.
Longer.
Longer, you know, you never know about these projects, so you couldn't have this approved. I wouldn't have, so I was gonna vote against it, but really, they got to realize it's just a zone change, and once they realize they couldn't do anything, then that was fine with me.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Well, I look forward to seeing everybody next month, thanks for all of your participation.
We look forward to seeing you on the thirtieth, see, I got drafted.
Uh, we'll take a motion to adjourn unless there's any other comments from any other commissioners this evening.
I think the mayor has a, has a.
Mayor, mayor's got her hand up.
Oh, good, you could see that, can you hear me? Can you guys hear me, okay, yeah, cause I'm, I'm not videoed, so. I just, uh, wanted to thank all of you tonight, that was a very long meeting, that's been a marathon, and I'm just so impressed with the work that you did and the conversation and the thought process that went into this, this evening, and I just wanted to thank you all. Um, from Kyle to Nicholas to um Anthony to all of the commissioners, you just did a great job, and it's much appreciated, thank you.
And they did a great job.
All right, who wants to move to adjourn?
I moved to.
Somebody ordered pizza, didn't they, let's wait for the pizza, no, I'm just joking.
Suzie?
I moved to adjourn.
Jennifer, do I hear your second?
Second.
Oh, all in favor, say get out of here.
Yeah, I.
All right, I don't think anybody's opposed, thanks to everybody, staff especially, Mr. Peas and Mr. Jenkins, Amy. Have a wonderful month, take care, everybody.
Good night.